After which we'll break for lunch and the afternoon session will resume with AIM and Parks and Recreation will complete the day for us today. And so with us today is Chief Sherbaum and his staff. And if you are ready, Chief, welcome, and the floor is yours.
Well, thank you, Chairman Shuck. It's good morning to all of you. Thank you for your service for our city and for the mayor and this council's support of the men and women of law enforcement. As we gather today, a dedicated crew of our department that is going to sleep, they've been up all night in our 911 center out on the street protecting our city. I always acknowledge those that are not here today. I am enjoyed today by our Assistant Chief to my right, Carvin Tyus, and to his right, our Deputy Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Orr, and to my left, Mr. Marshall Freeman, our Chief Administrative Officer, and to his left, our Budget Chief, Yolanda Pascal. Sitting behind me, other members of the APT team, our Budget Manager, Angela Nelson, our Director of Code Enforcement, Director Tally, our Deputy Director of E911, Director Solis, and then Major Reese. And we appreciate this opportunity to come before you to give a report out on our use of the funds that were entrusted to us during the budget that we're currently operating under and the vision and what will be done on funds entrusted to us in the upcoming budget. The mission of the Atlanta Police Department is to, at all times, to be trusted by the community in all of our neighborhoods and to be very good at what we do regardless of what we're called upon to do. The priorities of this administration that is setting around Mr. Bro, of the Atlanta Police Department, both our civilians as well as our sworn staff, ensure that we're employing smart crime-fighting tools throughout the city, ensure that we are embracing and carrying out 21st century policing principles and being a department of excellence, and developing sustainability measures to keep that going on in the years to come. The Atlanta Police Department's organization, if you look at the org chart, you're going to notice a couple items there that you may have noticed last year's budget presentation. During this budget, we stood up the Special Events Division. In January, we were approaching the college football championship being played out here in the city. We were disappointed that Georgia was not appearing once again, but we still made sure it was a safe for those that were here in our city. The Special Events Division began planning for that to ensure that we had a safe event. But you will also note they are in place. They have been working hard to get ready for the Club Cup games that will be appearing in our city here in June. And then this division is already preparing for 13 months from now when we will have the world back again in our city for the World Cup. So this division is very hard at work. It was necessary to reactivate that as we're preparing, and they have also been entrusted with managing safely all the protest activity that occur here in the city.
Before you get into your stats, let me say we've been joined by Council President Shipman, Ms. Marcy Collier Overstreet, and Mr. Matt Westmoreland.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll notice we continue to grow our Chief Administrative Officer Division. This has allowed us, since the mayor came to office and was charged with the department, to take sworn talent to move back to crime fighting and community engagement and onboard civilian leadership in key areas to support the men and women of the department. We have seen notable successes around hiring, technology adoption and optimization, as well as the delivery and activation of the Public Safety Training Center, also in areas around strategic initiatives and HR support. So I want to thank everyone that has joined the team last year and the budget before that as we grow that ability to protect the city of Atlanta, support all those that are out doing the difficult and the dangerous in our city. You also notice we have our intelligence analysts. We have 10 dedicated civilians that have been vital to our ability to protect Atlanta over the last year. These real-time intelligence analysts gives updated information as we combat street racing in the city, protect protests, fight gangs, and making sure that anything that may be playing out around the globe or even in the nation, we quickly have information here in the city to be able to protect that event. You also notice our successes we've been experiencing around crime fighting. We give a weekly update to our Public Safety Committee led by Chairwoman Boone, and this is the same statistic we've been able to report over the last number of weeks and months. We continue to see, as our most recent COBRA report, a reduction in homicides in the city over the previous time this year. We continue to see a reduction around property crimes and overall crime in the city as of last week, down 11%. But that's just not a year trend. We actually ended last year with overall crime in the city down 5%. We saw a continued reduction of crimes against persons down, overall crimes against persons are down actually 24% since 2022, when our mayor took office. We contended for a period of time with a high number of vehicle thefts in the city around Hyundai's and Kia's. We continue to see that reduced. Last year, it was reduced 29% by education. Many of you were able to deliver to your constituents important information of how to prevent your vehicles from being stolen. You allowed the mayor to host pop-up shops in your district so we could make sure we have that out, and we distributed clubs throughout. Not only was that down double digits last year, I'm very pleased to report that that is down again double digits as we continue through the year. And was able to award Zone 3 the Crime Reduction Award for reducing its crime 22% over the previous year. But that award also goes to every neighborhood watch captain, NPU chair, neighborhood president, everyone that advocates for safe neighborhoods, very successful in that area. And that crime reduction, Chairman Shuck and members of the committee, was occurring while at the same time we had over 40 candidate visits to our city during our presidential election. That occurred at the same time that we were protecting the Public Safety Training Center. It occurred at the same time that many citizens took to our streets to protest issues that was important to them, and so officers had to be assigned to those details repeatedly throughout the budget year. So to see another year of reduction in crime while we were able to manage those events, including yet again the running of the Peachtree Road Race, our Pride Parade, the Chick-fil-A Bowl, the Martin Luther King Day March, and Labor Day, I do want to again commend the men and women of the Atlanta Police Department, civilians sworn for an incredible year reducing crime by keeping these large premier events safe. Some other highlights that I want to bring to your attention throughout the course of the year, this using the funds that were entrusted to us on the current budget, we continue to fight crime. It is our obligation to go after gangs, guns, and drugs that are present in the city. And please report that last year, we shut down 73 unique drug dealing operations that were occurring throughout our 245 neighborhoods, left untouched. Those will in fact cause serious damage to a city's sense of safety and actual city. Many of all remember, last year, we were continuing with a high number of domestic violence homicides in our city. In fact, when I sit here this time last year, domestic violence homicides was the number one motivator in our city for someone to lose their life. That has dropped considerably thanks to the No More campaign that was launched by the mayor that many of you were able to take to your districts. But as I said here today, a homicide motivated by drug dealing, a drug deal gone bad, a drug deal operation being targeted, that is actually the number two reason. And so we worked very hard to continue. We shut down 73 last year. So far, we have shut down 25 narcotics operations here in the city. Last year, using the budget, we were able to remove 2,195 guns off the street of the city. Those guns are now locked up in our gun vault. They will not be used in a park of the city, outside a nightlife establishment, or be able to use any, to be able to cause any harm. And that is in addition to the 2,258 firearms that we actually recovered from the city the previous year. Continue to see a reduction of shooting victims in our city. It was down 7% from 2023, down 19% from 2022. We continue to see a reduction this morning. And I do want to note, if I may, Mr. Chair, the ability to reduce homicides in the city has dashed off the men and women at this table or wearing a uniform. This has been the collective effort of everyone around youth initiatives, around faith-based approaches. When I sat here in 2022 and gave this presentation, we'd had 64 homicides already in our city that year. When I sat here this morning, we've only had 30 so far in the city. So this has been the group project that the mayor refers to, the ability of everyone to go about the business of keeping Atlanta safe. If you are investing in the life of one young person in our city, if you have integrated one camera in our city, you have contributed to that reduction in homicides. We continue to be focused in areas we know we may have violent crime occurring. You know we started in the previous budgets, heat wave, deep freeze, targeted crime enforcement using our partners at the federal, state, and regional level. That has allowed us to be able to reduce crime in areas that we know gun violence is likely to occur. We started in this budget another initiative called Kickstart, which was played out right around the start of spring break, which we often see issues. We were able to make 51 arrests during that detail and bring seven guns off the streets. I do want to thank the team for that. Street racing has been combated effectively during the budget that we're operating under. Operation Burnout led to 47 arrests of street racers inside of Atlanta, Georgia. 19 vehicles were confiscated and six firearms were recovered. And I don't know if there's any civic-minded street racers watching my presentation this morning, Mr. Chair, but if you come to the city, we're going to arrest you. And so take that street racing elsewhere, do something else with your time. It's not going to occur here in the city of Atlanta. Our License and Permits Unit has been hard at work. We want to make sure we have a thriving nightlife, but we want to make sure we have a responsible nightlife in the city. Last year in 2024, there were 1,052 compliance checks that were carried out. That was a 9% increase over the previous year. That was, we also saw a 28% increase in charges being brought against individuals operating outside of what the ordinance allows, and a 77% increase in arrests of individuals that were operating inappropriately and leading to potentially negative outcomes in their neighborhoods. And so far this year, we have initiated 426 compliance checks in the city using our new system that we have to be able to select randomly those for compliance checks. We do know that illegal gambling is occurring, if there's illegal payouts happening in our city at gaming machines, that will lead to gun violence. And so far, we have shut down 15 illegal gambling operations in the city. And each time we shut those down, we see an immediate drop in violence around those locations and gun violence. Individuals will know who's gotten illegal gains from a gambling operation. They will be followed from the location, they will be robbed, and a gun is most often used. So I want to thank the GBI, Georgia Lottery, and our License and Permits Unit for shutting down that contributor to gun violence in the city. Underage details, we did target 430 locations to ensure they were not selling illegally to minors that has tragic outcomes, and 54 locations were cited for doing that as we bring the compliance about. I did note earlier standing up the Special Events Division because we did host the National Football Championship in the city, but it just wasn't that event that was occurring during the current budget. We also had during that four-day operation, the Martin Luther King commemoration celebrations that occurred in the March. We also had the inauguration occurring in Washington DC. We had 500 officers assigned to the downtown space to make sure all of those events were safe. Remember what happened back on January 1st? A terror attack had played out in New Orleans. Many citizens had lost their lives because of a terror attack there. That attack caused us to have to shift and look for vulnerabilities which could play out at any of the events that I just gave you. And I do want to commend the team for that four-day operational period. We had no major incidents occur, and a lot of work went in to ensure that the vulnerability that was exploited in New Orleans was not exploited here in Atlanta, and everyone enjoyed their time here. It just wasn't that that happened in January. In January, we did our part of assigning officers and resources to honoring our former president, President Carter, as we executed Operation Dovetail in the city. We also honored Senator Fort's passing with officer's assignment, and we didn't weather one winter emergency. Ladies and gentlemen, we entered two weather emergencies, which required officers to be called back to work, officers to be held over, and the men and women in our 911 center to actually sleep in hotels next to the 911 center. So when everyone called 911, their call was answered despite what the weather was occurring outside. We also are pleased to report a continued growth in the Atlanta Police Department. I'll be giving those numbers shortly. On this budget, we did open a recruitment center. So if you have any constituents that want to join the Atlanta Police Department, make a difference in our city, civilians sworn, come to Public Safety Headquarters right next to is our nice new recruitment center. They can come in anytime, Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, and get an application, speak with the recruiter. We love to see them join the organization. We attended over 120 recruitment events during last year. We saw our hiring grow by 34% in the first quarter of this year. And I'm also pleased to report, we are a department seeking to meet the call for 30/30, that 30% of law enforcement agencies should be comprised of 30% of females, and 40% of our applicants so far this coming this year have been females answering that call. And so we are proud of our diversity within the Atlanta Police Department. I want to thank everyone that serves within the organization. Our E911 Center launched the Make the Right Call 311 versus 911. I want to thank you all for helping get that message out. We don't need to know about the spider in your house, we want to know about the fire next door. And so please continue to make sure that has gone out. Last year, in 2024, your 911 professionals answered 1.2 million 911 calls, 1,277,553 to be exact. Last year, in 2023, you know we were continuing with very high answer times. The average answer time in 2022 was 29 seconds. The average answer time in 2023 was 24 seconds. Because of investments given to us through the budget process, the hiring of additional staff, the realigning of processes led by our leadership, the 911 Center, as well as technology we onboarded, that dropped to 12 seconds in 2024. And ladies and gentlemen, as I said here before you this morning, our average answer time in April was 9.7 seconds. And I want to thank everyone that has decided to call 311 and not 911. I want to thank the incredible work by Director Arnold and Deputy Director Solis, using the funds entrusted to them to make the necessary improvements that if you call your fire department, your police department, you need an ambulance, the call's going to be answered quickly. We onboarded a number of technology enhancements through the use of the budget. Our new report management system allows us to quickly gather data to be able to allocate where we dispatch resources to. It allows us to speed our officers on calls to get them back in service. We onboarded the new BodyWorn Camera 4, which gives us more clarity and information and data around officer deployment and compliance with departmental policies, and allow us to quickly determine if there's been any violation from our policies. We onboarded a new digitized Office of Professional Standards Report System. Before, those reports had all been, those investigations were paper. They would get lost, they would not get moved quickly, and now that has been completely digitized. Connect Atlanta continues to grow because of the investments of the administration in this council in our camera infrastructure. In 2022, we had 10,000 integrated cameras. As we ended 2024, that had grown to 19,500. That has allowed us to find lost children, to find fleeing felons. It allows us to track vehicles throughout the city that may be committing crimes. And so I want to thank everyone for continuing to work in that space. Going to look at a few other accomplishments in the budget and in fiscal year '25. We are an accredited law enforcement agency. Was very pleased to join that distinction with our peers, the Atlanta Fire Rescue. There are 18,000 law enforcement agencies in the United States of America. Only 797 of them are accredited. And as there is also another distinction, of the agencies that have above 500 officers, only 45 are accredited. That is a lot of work. That work was launched under Mayor Franklin and Chief Pennington. And that work allowing us to arrive at that level of distinction has been carried out year after year. We just completed our seventh renewal, and we have been an accredited agency since 2005. It doesn't come without time, it doesn't come without talent and cost to be able to remain that distinction. But to assure the citizens, to assure you as council members and our elected representatives that we are abiding by and complying with all the best practices that has been identified by the professional organization, this is one of those reassurances. We continue to be engaged in areas that we hope that are, that we know is preventing crime. Our PALL Youth Enrollment increased. In 2023, we had 448 young men and women enrolled at our PALL centers. That grew to 473 in 2024. We also engaged in 239 community events throughout the city, ensuring that we had a positive interaction with the citizen of the city, ensuring that we were able to pass along information and items to keep our citizens safe. Many of that was done in conjunction with you at the various events that you carry out across the city, and we want to continue to be a strong partner as you join us to keep Atlanta safe. Was very excited last year to announce the start of the care unit through the budget. That was a pilot program. As the same time that we saw the hero units being rolled back a little bit, we were advancing in that space. I'm proud to report that in 2024, that unit that started at mid-year, it wasn't even a full calendar year, they responded to 2,398 calls for service. And they completed 1,632 police reports that otherwise citizens would have waited for a sworn officer to respond to and would have kept that officer out of service. Year-to-date, they have responded to 1,267 calls and 686 reports. And so in the budget that's being proposed for your consideration, we will be growing, if approved, our care units. I hope you've seen them out, and while they're now patrolling in neighborhoods in Zones 2 and 5, given that is the predominant zones with calls that are aligned with their skillset, we do anticipate in this budget year to see that moving throughout the city. So those nice, beautiful black and green trucks in your neighborhoods as well. Take-home cars, as you recall, when many of you were elected to your seats in 2022 and our mayor came to office, 70% of the police department's fleet was past its life cycle, 70%. There were days we had more officers standing in roll call than we could send to the streets, and we had to come up with footbeats, and we had to use vans and vehicles that were not aligned with the mission of that particular officer. I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank this body for investing in our fleet. When times are critical, it is vital that we get to the call quickly with the equipment that we need. Vehicle deployment is growing. We've had a 119% increase from 2023 to 2024, when 325 vehicles were issued to the department last year versus 148 the year before. We're now up to 316 take-home car vehicles. And let me tell you why that matters. When we approached the two snow emergencies and we overlaid the projected precipitation, accumulation of snow and ice, what employees we thought could not get to work, we were able to project to a high-like degree of accuracy what we thought our attendance rate would be based on the weather. Those officers in the city with take-home cars became the backbone of our planned response for inclement weather. And so officers having vehicles in their driveway allows us to navigate key emergencies, be it weather events, be it a terror attack, be it civil unrest. Having vehicles in officers' driveways where they are makes us more effective as a police department. So thank you to this body giving us the ability to overcome that deficit of our vehicles being out of cycle. You will notice that we actually are seeing a reduction in the repair cost of our vehicles because of your investment there. It was during this budget that we brought online the Public Safety Training Center. This has been a generational need of the Atlanta Police Department. And on April 7th, we actually fully activated that campus. Back in March of this year, our mounted patrol moved in, our K-9 patrol moved in and started working out that space. All of our police recruits are in service, our specialized training moved there on March 7th. And we graduated our first class from the campus on Tuesday of this week. And if you visit, and if you didn't have the opportunity to visit the ribbon cutting, please know an invitation is there for you at all times. You will see a campus alive, a campus alive with firefighters and police officers training, being ready for the call. I was very pleased this Tuesday, as I was leaving the campus, to see citizens using the sidewalk infrastructure that is now placed throughout and about. So please, once you're able to come out, do come and visit the Training Center. But that did come online. And I want to thank you all. This will be a legacy of safety in our city that whatever any of our next chapters are in our professional life, we will know that citizens are safe that day for firefighters and police officers that were equipped because of your standing behind this project that this city vitally needed. Code Enforcement and Vehicles For Hire was hard at work. Our Code Enforcement did 17,590 field inspections last year. That is a 40% increase, and they issued 1,879 citations, making property owners appear before courts to be held accountable for the way that they're keeping up their properties. And so I want to thank Director Tally's team for that work there. We did acquire vehicles for hire under this budget. They have been hard at work. We hired three additional staff members and a supervisor to ensure that the taxi cab and ride-share infrastructure is properly working here in the city. Going to talk about staffing for a little bit. And again, thank our mayor for his standing behind our professional staff, our sworn staff, as well as your support through the budget process. Our current staffing at our, all across the professional staff is now grown. We currently have 547 professional staff at work. We have decreased our vacancies by 42% from 2024 around our professionals. 165 of those are working at the 911 center. That is our crime scene techs. That is our GCI techs. That is our warrant techs. That is our administrative professionals. But we have 547 dedicated individuals. If not for them, the officers wearing the badge could not be at the scenes they are at. And I want to thank you for supporting that growth and thank them for their work. The last time a chief of police was able to sit at this table and inform the council of this city that there was over 1,700 officers on the Atlanta Police Department in our sworn section was in 2021. And I'm able to report to you all today that we currently have in our sworn side of the department over 1,750 officers within the Atlanta Police Department. That's counting our recruits that are in training. I want to thank everyone for that work. So far this year, we have onboarded 118 new individuals in the department that's joining our sworn side. In fact, there's an onboarding occurring this morning at Public Safety Headquarters of individuals that are growing here. That has been because the investment of the administration and the investment of this body in pensions, pay, take-home car programs at Public Safety Training Center in our precincts. And I just listed to you, ladies and gentlemen, the top five reasons that would appear on an exit interview of why individuals were leaving the Atlanta Police Department. And so the same investment of why people left the organization is bringing individuals into the organization. And I want to thank our civilian staff for their hard work and our sworn that are signed about ground recruitment. And it's not just an anomaly. We have a strong pipeline that is at play. We have seen a doubling in our pending approvals. We have seen a doubling in our investigation status. As of this morning, there are 25 individuals that are scheduled to onboard that we have not yet brought into the organization. We have 85 that are pending approval by command staff to be given an onboarding date, and that is not counting the 350 investigations that are underway for individuals that have passed the initial round of review to be suitable for the profession that we have in the pipeline. When other cities are not seeing this trend, Atlanta is bucking the national trend. We have people onboarding with the organization, and we are seeing our attrition numbers approve. Back in 2015, Chief Turner initiated the Recapture Program to be able to retain a skillset needed within the organization because we were seeing a high number of departures and we were not seeing the numbers coming in that we wanted. That was continued in 2020 when we saw a large number, almost 200 individuals would leave the organization in an 18-month period over what was transpiring at the time. The recapture had to be retained to be able to stay viable as an organization to meet our obligations within this department's mission to keep Atlanta safe. But I am very pleased to report that that temporary measure started in 2015 that had to be retained in 2020. We're actually in a position where we can start rolling that back. And so those additional expenses incurred to stabilize the force because of the investments that has been done by our mayor, we were able to roll that back. That's going to be a three-phase rollback. We currently have 66 individuals in recapture, and so we're going to start a third, third, third roughly in that. The first phase for the organization, they ended their contributions in April, but the next group will end their contributions in October, and then a year from now, in April of next year, we'll see that program finally ended. That will bring about savings of $5.6 million that were being supplemental use or stabilization. We see our recruitment numbers staying well ahead of that. We are actually at the point, we have traditionally, when we've had a large number of recruits, started a recruit class every other month. We are going to start a recruit class every month, April, May, June, July, August, and September, to keep track of the onboarding numbers that we currently have. We'll revisit it in September, see do we need to return to an every-other-month schedule. And I want to thank every member that was in the Recapture Program. Can you imagine having served anywhere for 30 years and then you agree to stay on to be able to keep that organization viable? So everyone that said yes to continued service after nobly serving this organization for 30 years, I thank them for their service and what they've done, and we look forward to be able to continue to grow the police department under the budget that's being before you for your consideration. Going to look at the areas that we have in our three funds that we use to carry out our law enforcement mission. E911 in the proposed budget will have a budget of $23 million. The Aviation Fund, approximately $30 million. And then in our General Fund, $308 million, which will notice is approximately a 19% increase over our 25 adopted budget, but it actually normalizes the operational expenses needed to run the organization as we navigate all the large events that come to the city as the department is seeing an improvement in its attrition numbers and an improvement in its recruitment numbers that have not been present in the previous budgets. 80% of our budget is the men and women that do this job. 80% of this budget are those that go out to the calls, those that answer the calls, those that are able to process crime scene, work through our warrants, work at our supply unit, our logistics. It is those that report to duty every day and say yes to this organization. The variance you see from previous years because our hiring has accelerated. It is because when we look to see where did we stand among other cities on our pay and on our benefits, we found through the pay and class study, and I want to thank the administration for that and you for supporting it, that we were not where we needed to be to be competitive. And once we instituted that pay and class study and we brought onboard the Public Safety Training Center, we started seeing the outcome that I just gave you. And so this budget will allow us to support those as we grow back to police department. 9% of our budget is for purchased contracts and services. That is all the contracts that we use to keep the technology working and our department equipped. That is our camera maintenance service and cloud stories. That's all of our records, our body worn cameras. That's the systems I just stated about, about the digitizing of many functions of the department that were paper for years. It's the new dashboards and systems that we use to ensure that we're properly deployed in the area we need to be doing the right things in the right neighborhood. That 9% keeps us truly aligned with our 21st century policing commitment and the transparency that the citizens would expect of the police department. 3% of the budget is our supplies. And keep in mind, ladies and gentlemen, this is the budget that's going to get us to the World Cup. And so it's going to be here, before you know it, in 13 months, we will be here. But this is the budget that will allow us to equip our officers for that time, that deployment, the uniform, the supplies they will need as we welcome everyone here. We watch that very closely through our Chief Administrative Officer's arm to be able to make sure we're spending that wisely and using the best we can around all that we need to equip our men and women. 4% of our budget will be the inter-fund charges, which is traditionally there. This includes fleet repair and fuel. And as I stated earlier, we're seeing a sharp improvement in the amount of money needed to keep the fleet running. When the fleet is 70% past its life cycle, that is a lot of duct tape, oil, wires that you need to keep that running. And we are seeing that dropping with the vehicles that has been funded. And then our vehicle financing will continue as we grow the expansion of the fleet. Just want to look at the General Fund for the FY projections. Just want to look at the general fund for the FY projections. Why did we see the change that we saw? There's a number of reasons for that. The increased hiring has already been mentioned. The approved attrition, individuals not leaving the organization at the percent and rate that we had traditionally seen. But we also had a lot going on last year that required the expense of overtime being used. I mentioned the 40-some candidate visits that occurred here in the city with that or by their surrogates. As you all know, we hosted one of the key debates here in Atlanta, Georgia. There was a lot of First Amendment activity going on in our streets, people that felt very strongly about that issue. But what we also saw was people that were on the other side of that issue showing up, wanting to be heard as well. And so deployment of officers to keep everyone's First Amendment rights protected required the burning of overtime, staffing the Training Center site for its security. As that was being built, we started to see last year a sharp drop in the arson attacks that were occurring, but we had to remain ready. And so there was a significant amount of overtime that had to be spent last year to protect all of the large events, manage the election time, and bring the Public Safety Training Center. We stopped having to use any overtime at the Public Safety Training Center in December of last year. So I'm going to give you a couple of key variables as we've been able to see a moderation in the protest environment in our city as the election year ended, as we're able to move past January that just had an extraordinary demand on the resource of the Atlanta Police Department. In November, we spent approximately $1.8 million in overtime. In January, which had the snow emergencies, it had the four-day activation of events, we spent $2.2 million in overtime. Hustle started moving in the rearview and we had more people on the bench that we could reallocate resources to as we had various events occurring. We've been seeing that drop. And so it dropped to 366,000 in overtime in February. That then remains about steady at 370 in overtime in March. Then last month, we only spent 275,000 in overtime in the city. And so we've got to remember, if I am 30 minutes from going home and a crime happens in front of me or I get sent to a call where the citizen needs help, that will count as overtime as you stay over. But the overtime needed for the Training Center, the overtime needed for large events, and as well as the protest environment, that has dropped considerably. And our ability to move past that phase, we won't see that arising again until we get into a few days of Club Cup, we anticipate around the Peach Street Road Race. And also keep in mind, our overtime is used for 10 city holidays as well. And in most city holidays, when individuals have the ability to stay home or work with a skeleton staff, we're just the opposite. Fourth of July, every member of the Atlanta Police Department has to work. Labor Day weekend, we're all working. And so it is just the opposite effect for us when we go into these large overtime areas of windows. But we do anticipate with the plan that was created by the executive team that's been executed, that we'll be able to keep overtime barring some unforeseen natural disaster event, that we'll be able to keep overtime at that very manageable lower rate that I just gave you. And that's also the byproduct of the many different recruit classes that we currently have within the system. The priorities that you will see under the budget, if it's approved, we are going to continue on our mayor's outlined priorities. The mayor's always proclaimed his desire to be this, to be one safe city. And we certainly see that play out since 2022. But ladies and gentlemen, this year, we're going to have to be, in this budget, we're going to have the world's safe city. Because next year, we don't know who's coming here to the city to chair on their team, but we're legally going to have the glow back in Atlanta. So this budget will allow us to be one safe city for the world. We're going to continue our crime fighting around gangs, guns, and drugs, and supporting all of our youth engagement initiatives outside of Powell. We're going to continue with this budget to do our various details with our partnerships at the federal, state, and regional level to keep all those events safe and to be able to do targeted enforcement to reduce gun violence in our city. We'll continue to be an investment in our technology to ensure that the camera network that I referenced earlier is working, is functional. This budget will bring on e-citation, which I am very excited about. We continue to write paper tickets to citizens of the city. There is probably someone out there that in 2003, when I wrote them tickets, I was trying to figure out what court date was because my handwriting was so bad. Citizens should be able to see what their court date is. Citizens should be able to see what they've been charged with. And they need to know what they can do to avail themselves of a courtroom. The solicitors, our wonderful staff at the judge's offices, they need to be able to quickly reassign court dates, make citizens aware. And so once we're able to establish our e-citation, the pilot program is underway, this current budget, you will see our proficiency of this department that will lead to proficiency in the public defender's office, the solicitor's office, as well as the municipal court. And we're behind the eight ball on this, or we're behind, I should say, what other departments are doing. This will allow us to have a higher level of accountability. You will see in the budget, the expansion of the care program. We will be going to 20 care officers in the city, serving all of our zones. You'll see an expansion of the PATH Force under this budget and bringing on the Catus software system for the new Public Safety Training Center to ensure that fire and police are optimizing the use of that space for training, as well as making sure that everyone that is reporting there for any event you may have, the rooms are available and it is ready to go. This budget will be used to reinforce the mayor's opportunity for all. Code enforcement will continue to be bolstered to be able to carry out the safe and secure housing initiatives that is important to you and important to our mayor. You're going to send you, see under this budget, an increase in our sworn and civilian personnel. If we would keep the trajectory that we have today, under the improvement of our attrition, the improvement of our recruitment, there's many variables here, we could in theory hit our authorized strength in the budget that is approved for physical year 2028. And so that is something, then that is a lot of variables at play there. But if we keep what we have this morning, that is what we could conceivably see. And so I appreciate you all investing in those that work in our city. We're going to continue on this budget to be a city built for the future. The fleet expansion will continue. I'm happy to note that all new vehicles being brought onboard have the capability to do bilingual announcements through the PA systems on preset messaging that we would need in a variety of situations, from evacuations needed to be able to move individuals away from an area there's a suspicious device. Many of you can recall in 1996, we had to quickly evacuate Centennial Olympic Park. And so we will be using investment in our technology provided in this budget to make sure we're ready for that capability once it arrives here. The Public Safety Training Center's Wellness Center will be activated under this budget and supported under this budget, the Public Safety Training Center. We have two now, thanks to the leadership of Fire Chief Smith and Dr. Moore, her incredible team. We have the one Wellness Center that's currently at Public Safety Headquarters to attack those stressors in this life that lead to the high level of substance abuse and suicide that is present in first responder professions. That will now be joined by a second Wellness Center at the Public Safety Training Center that will support our mandate that every member of the Police Department has to have an annual mental health wellness check-in each and every year. We're going to treat it just like a physical, physical at that point. City built for the future, the World Cup readiness, this budget will ensure that we're equipped. As we've been visiting other cities across the globe that have hosted these games, we learned quickly that the mounted patrol has been key in helping guide crowds, both jubilant and disappointed crowds throughout the base. So if you come and visit our Training Center now, you will see your mounted patrol already preparing for the World Cup, doing a number of training scenarios to be able to assist in crowd control management. This budget will help equip those horses to remain safe during that time and support our strategic planning and succession planning within the organization. This budget ensures that we're ethical and efficient. And I appreciate the work going around optimizing our facilities. The Public Safety Training Center is now the crown jewel of the nation without argument. But we will now soon, Councilmember Boone and Councilmember Overstreet have a new Zone Four precinct that will be built. We're also glad to report Councilmember Hillis and Councilmember Amos said a new Zone One precinct is being refurbished. And then those officers will be reporting to a nice precinct worthy of the name. And I am confident this year they'll have air conditioner that's not provided by portable air conditioning system. And I want to thank all the men and women of the department that work in areas that need improvement, we're going to work aggressive to do that. This budget will ensure a new 911 Center coming online to be able to continue to support the growth of the city and also a new Zone Five precinct, which is being moved, the mobile precinct, to a space in the northern end of the district. And so we're excited for that as well. You're going to see in this improvement, in this budget, a continued improvement of our E-911 answer times. We're going to do exactly what we've been doing under the leadership of Director Arnold and Director Solis, investing in technology and process enhancements, personnel to continue to improve the 911 answer times, license and permits. We'll continue to receive new technology and process enhancements under this budget, as will the expansion of our cyber lab. We see phones and computers being used in a wide array of crimes. This will allow us to do it under the budgets. Mr. Chairman, that is my brief overview, I hope, of how we've been stewards of the money entrusted at us last year, how we envision using funds of taxpayers entrusted to us this year. And I do want to thank you all for continuing to serve in the capacities that you do. It's not easy to be elected officials, and we thank you for serving in that role and also being a good partner with us in all 245 neighborhoods in our city.
All right. Well, Chief, we're all looking forward to you learning how to present a budget. All right. We've been joined by Ms. Collins, Mr. Dozier, Ms. Bakhtiari, Mr. Amos. In other words, we're almost all here. I say that because the mic is now thrown to us. Please be mindful that everyone here might want to use the same amount of time that you do. Who's up first? Ms. Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Chief. A few questions. The one staffing number that went down was the E-911 staffing. What is behind that and what is the plan to get that more to a robust level?
E-911, that ebbs and flows. Obviously, we try to take into consideration retirements that may be occurring, individuals that may not, no one do that. At some point, we had to modernize, I would say, enhance our hiring process. And so we had a period of time that we were restructuring. During the restructuring, we did see a drop in our applications coming in. We have since made an adjustment to that, and we anticipate that to pick back up.
Understood. You mentioned that at the beginning of our terms, 7% of the APD fleet was beyond its life cycle.
That's correct, sir.
What is that number at now with the rollouts of the new fleet?
Yes, our DPW can give you the most accurate report of that. I do not have that in front of me. And so I will get you the percent for that, sir.
Do we know the number of take-home cars that have been issued?
Yes, sir, we do. The number of take-home car vehicles that we've issued so far have been 316.
Yes, sir.
And we're still planning to roll those out continually?
Oh, yes. And Mr. You might be able to tell us what is currently in the pipeline, but we have a steady stream that are coming.
Yes, sir. For this year, we're ordering 163 take-home vehicles.
And the delays with outfitting, those have been addressed?
They have. We actually have a new outfitter that's been accommodating to us as far as turnaround time.
Understood. Chief, you mentioned camera expansion, but also, I believe you mentioned it, but if not, I'll mention the need for camera maintenance. Many of these cameras, I worked for my predecessor 10 years ago and rolled out cameras in District Nine. Those cameras are 10 years old, there are cameras even older than that out there that either need to be replaced or they're potentially no longer working or have been damaged. What in this budget accounts for both expansion and camera maintenance?
The amount that's set aside for our equipment is all for the maintenance of the current system. New cameras are brought on and replaced by the Police Foundation through their partnership. We can provide you their goal for the current calendar year. They work under a different, a little bit different year than we work under. The amount that we have is to maintain those that we have. As you know, the city has well over 2,000 that are actually owned by the city. And then we work with our partners to be able to make sure that the other integrated cameras are in place. So our goal was to keep those 2,000-plus working. We can see that at real time of what the status of the cameras are, when we've quickly to repair them. The onboarding of new cameras, we can get your report out at PSLA on what that looks like for the Police Foundation.
And you also mentioned the expansion plan for the PATH Force. Now, we at this council, hopefully going to adopt a trails master plan over the next few months. I have already built trails in my neighborhood and myself and the mayor have made a commitment to bring the city to its river and complete the Silver Comet Connector Trail by the World Cup. So there are trails already out there, plus more coming that will need more and more patrolling. What is in this current plan, as you mentioned, to expand that force?
Yes, sir. Right now, we have approximately eight that are on that unit that's patrolling the PATH Force. We want to grow that to 20 under the current budget. We also will continue to use the bike units that exist in the zones. As you know, many of the zones already have bike units. They will supplement the PATH Force. But under the budget, we want to grow that to 20 over the course of 12 months.
And being semi-respectful of the chair's warning, I'll end just with a request. I would like to see, because I don't know that I've ever seen one. You mentioned the strides we've made in staffing, and we certainly see that. But I would just like a breakdown of sworn officers by their division, section, zone assignments to see where those 1,700-plus officers are.
Will do, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bakhtiari, followed by Mr. Amos, followed by President Shipman.
I was going to tap it to see if it was working. I wasn't expecting that. So first of all, thank you so much for being here. I first have to thank and commend Narcotics and Lieutenant Smith because I think, I want to say Zone Five has probably had, well, I don't know because I've looked at it a while, but we've had a very high number of chronic drug house shutdowns. I believe we're somewhere between 10 and 12. I think Major Reese would remember most of these locations. And we've been incredibly successful at that. So I really do want to give that team their kudos, as well as Daphne Tally and her team. And I do appreciate that we brought those positions. I believe we're at 25 now, correct, for code enforcement?
Do we have that?
The total number?
Yes.
One more, Councilmember will get that for you.
Thank you. And while Mr. Freeman is looking at that, I also wanted to ask, have we looked at the in-rim employees? Have those, have our code enforcement folks in in-rim also received those raises as well as code enforcement?
We do have a total of 89 employees for code enforcement.
Thank you. Would I, you said for code enforcement?
Yes.
Okay. Director Tally, did you want to say something?
No, no. I was just going to get them. So currently, there are 25 code enforcement officers. And yes, everyone did receive their increases.
Okay, thank you. Because I know we did that for the code enforcement officers and supervisors. I just wanted to make sure that was also in-rim. And I also was going to ask for recapture, the officers that we have working in the building. My understanding is that when they're recaptured, they're recaptured at the retirement wage or that there's not, we are not currently looking at upticks in their pay. Is that true?
So recapture, they enter into an agreement that is in the contract. So that is the established pay for that.
Okay.
Those individuals in recapture are receiving a full pension. And then they're also receiving whatever's agreed to for the recapture contract.
Okay.
And that will vary depending on what amount they retired at.
Understood. If we could, I would love to flag talking more about that offline because I know some of our officers that had been recaptured, oftentimes with injury, that are working in this building and making sure that we're preparing for their longevity as well. The other pieces I was hoping to ask, you mentioned the solicitor's office, and I want to flag that I will have questions for them because you all and code enforcement have done a great job. And I believe that the ball is being dropped on the solicitors in terms of trying these cases. So I am flagging that because I do want to take a look at how many cases you are bringing and seeing what the completion is because the repeated feedback I am getting is that solicitor's office is not doing their job of seeing these cases through. So I would love that data from you all to understand. But I also want to flag this because the solicitors are coming up, and I do want them to be prepared for those questions. I was also going to ask, in terms of, I was curious how much of the security was spent at the training facility and that we had to do up until December? What did our, I know there was a lot to look at, but what did overtime and everything?
For overtime?
Yes.
We can have worked through a stripe like that. Unfortunately, the pay codes don't let us distinguish what was protest, what was an election, a campaign. We would have to go back and physically look at who was assigned there during the time. So allow us, in fact, we have the exact same question because we need to know where it's being burned. So we're working through that very meticulously because we have to almost look at the individual to know, you know, it was unfortunate that any money had to be spent protecting such a vital infrastructure. But we can very pleased to report that stopped in December. We're going to get a full report on how much overtime is used for the election, how much overtime is used for protest management for the college football championship game. We're actually working on that and would hope to have that in the near future. Unfortunately, there's not pay codes to make it readily available.
Understood. I will make sure to, Mr. Freeman, we can continue discussing that offline. And this might be a question for Parks, but I thought I would ask because of all of the work that's been going into the training facility, the park design, should I say that for Parks in terms of what we're looking at is around the park design and this community around facility? Yes, go ahead, I'll say that for them. I was also going to ask, parking and towing, I've been speaking, Mr. Freeman, we've been speaking a little bit about this because I've been noticing that we're talking about giving more, like putting more responsibility on officers and having more issues with overflow like putting more responsibility on officers and having more issues with overflow parking with other situations. And my understanding was the ask of ATL Plus and others was to actually uppay above-duty officers to like $90. Is there a chance that we'd be able to work together to deputization of civilians or something? So that one, that is a relief that has taken off officers, that cost doesn't go up. And we can also look at perhaps removing responsibility from your all's plates and perhaps cutting costs at the same time.
Always willing to have that discussion. For use of civilians and that, those citations would need to be civil infractions, and they could not be a violation of the code in a criminal sense. So that would need to be something that we would work out with everyone involved in it. But always willing to have the discussion.
Thank you. And again, I wanted to also see if we could continue the conversation around mobile booking offline and trying to see if we can diversify mobile booking, looking at that, relieving these cases off the court system because we, as we see, we're having a lot of issues with certain offices bringing those cases to trial and actually executing them. So if there's a chance that we could look at perhaps printing it to being able to print a parking ticket where a traffic violation had a car, had a police officer's car rather than having to have them go to trial? Is there, I know this is something we talked about your first year on, Chief, and so I was wondering if there's been any advancement in that conversation?
Well, e-citation will certainly lay the groundwork for that.
Okay.
And in most citations, not all, allow a citizen to be able to pay the fine online or go to municipal court to pay the fine and not appear in court. There are a few that statutorily are not allowed to do that, but the vast majority can. E-citation would speed that process. There'd be no handwriting issues. It could be easily found online, and so that is, I think, a transparency function, procedural justice action by going e-citation that wins on many different fronts. And that is included in this budget.
Thank you. And you, I believe you said we had a, actually, you know what? I'll stop my questions for now and listen to Chair Shook. If there is time for me to ask questions after everyone else has gone, I will do. So otherwise, I'll email them over to you. And I just, I appreciate your time. I have additional questions. Obviously, my district has sent me a lot of questions about budget. I can tell by Mr. Freeman's face, that's not a surprise. So I will get those to you unless I have the opportunity to ask after. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Amos, followed by President Shipman.
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you to you and your team for the continual reevaluation of the decisions you make. Although Zone 5 stood up and accepted the challenge when we moved English Avenue into Zone 5, I think it is best fit when it comes to the holistic enforcement plan for it to be in Zone 1. You guys reevaluated that, moved it back into Zone 1, so we're moving forward with that. So thank you. You mentioned Zone 1 getting rehab. Would those funds for that project be in your budget or Dean's budget?
Dean's budget.
And they're being Dean's budget. So any additional funds would be to supplement or sort plant what is in Dean's budget for everyday maintenance of our facilities?
Correct. The Zone 1 rehab is just for the first floor and the exterior parking lot.
Yeah, thank you. Last but not least, the e-citation. Wonderful. Glad you said that. Just had a meeting with Deputy Chief Hampton and Major Knight, Zone 1, about residential parking. I am getting tickets for legally parking in front of my house in Vine City because Zone 1 officers don't have access to the database that we created, and I'm glad Commissioner Cavan is over there, that we created an ADOT for enforcement purposes, and it came down to handhelds that they need. So let me help, let me help you help us, this e-citation program. If we can pile it over in the Vine City, English Avenue area to see how it affects residential parking permits as well, it'll be greatly appreciated. And, Mr. Chair, I yield.
All right. Thank you. President Shipman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, teams, good to see you. Chief, in getting to know you over the years, I know that we share a passion for history, and I appreciate the historical context that you started. I want to start my comments with some historical context. In FY '22, the police budget as part of the general fund was 31.15%. This year, the proposed budget is 31.56%, a very small growth. And in fact, that growth almost matches exactly the growth of the overall budget. I want to commend you over the last few years for managing basically with a steady-state budget. It grows in absolute terms, but the overall general fund has grown. The percentage of the police budget as part of the whole has not really grown, but clearly, you've been able to accomplish a lot. You've been able to grow the force. You've been able to make investments. We've been able to make investments in equipment and technology. And I think that I want to just start the comments by saying you've been doing a lot more with relatively the same. So thank you for that. I also want to say that when I got here, there were three issues that I got a lot of calls about. One was 911 call times. And your staff, and I want to give a special shout out to Peter Ammon, who I know when he was on your side as well as in the mayor's office, has focused a lot on 911 response times. That is incredible progress. And I am glad to say that I receive very few calls or emails about 911 response times these days. And so that is tangible progress. Second is code enforcement. It is an issue that we have invested in, and we are starting to see some real upside in the investments that we've made. I have a question, which is if you project forward a year or two, where do you think code enforcement should be staffed? If we really are going to be able to do what we need to do relative to the amount of code issues that exist across the city, are we getting close to that level? Or do we need more investments over the next couple of budget cycles? Just a little bit of a forward view.
Yes, so if you look at our strategic plan where we have asked ourselves the same question, it would be a doubling of the, of the unit.
Okay.
To stay abreast of everything that's being asked.
Yep. Same question on the care units. Obviously, the pilot has gone extremely well. Lots of us have been excited about it. You're continuing to invest more to roll out across the city. Makes sense. If we sort of, if you're now at a run rate of, so far this year, you said year-to-date it was about 1,000 citations, correct? So that would, somewhere around 2,500, 3,000 citations maybe over the course of the year?
And those were reports completed, sir.
I mean, sorry, reports completed. Thank you. Reports completed. What do you think is the capacity of a care unit within the, within the overall policing approach?
Well, in some cities, it's in the hundreds, 200 to 300. And so as we look at the city growing, if you remember during the flooding we had this past year, you actually saw care officers walking off key intersections and make sure citizens didn't wander that area. I could conceivably see what we're getting out of our pilot, a care's unit approximately 200 here in the city to making sure. And that would be heavily mobilized during key events like the World Cup. But I think you could see 200 easily being kept busy and expanding the type of calls they're given to go to.
Okay, that's very helpful. What kind of timeframe do you think that you could potentially implement that level? Is that a five-year view? Is that a three-year view to be able to digest that many folks and changing the work cycle?
It would certainly be three to five years. We couldn't, we couldn't do it any quicker than three. We're hiring directly into the care program. We also have recruits that aren't going to pass out of mandate training because of a key skill set that has nothing to do with that area, firearms generally being the one. And a number of them have said yes to continue to serve the city in that capacity. So we have two different streams that are in there. We also envision potentially using the care program as a pipeline in the sworn. You can become a care officer at 18. You can't become a police officer at 21. And so we would actually like to work with our, with APS, with the Technical College to be able to see, can we use that as a pipeline? It would be a three to five year as we grow the department. But we're seeing positive trends on every other area. I don't see why this one would be any different.
Thank you. A quick question about the actual, the airport revenue fund side of your budget. The salaries, even FY '25 adopted FY '26 budget, basically are flat. But the, the extra help line goes way up from FY '25 to FY '26. Can you talk just a little bit about why the airport budget is structured that way?
Look at that for you, Mr. President. Yeah. It was the hiring of more security officers, I believe. We're verifying that just off the top of my head. But it is the hiring of civilian security officers.
Got it, space. And just finally, for me at the moment, we've heard a lot about tariffs and supply chain, certain things that are made in places that may be disrupted. Have you seen or do you anticipate any particular types of equipment that you need that may be disrupted because of supply chain issues?
So that's not been flagged to us yet. We are speaking with our professional organizations that we belong to, with our partners, and we've not seen that become red flagged to us. We know back during the times of COVID, we did anticipate supply chain disruptions when we've quickly tried to secure certain assets needed by the city. That same model remains, so we are looking what could be potential disruptions, and we will work to act on that or to retain items within the, our supply section that we may need. Right now, I'm not aware of anything. I'll look to my peers. They may have a late breaking news on that, but-
Good. Let me just close my comments in case I don't get the mic again. I just, a, sitting in this chair, Chief, you have always taken special interest and care to be proactive about city council issues, whether it is security around city council meetings or whether, whether it is threats specifically to council members. And I just want to say that I appreciate that you have always been very proactive with me and with my colleagues in making sure that APD is responsive, but also is looking out for the wellness and the safety of this body. And I do not go a day without appreciating that, and I want to say that on the record to you and all of your team. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I know we all ditto that. Ms. Silverstreet, followed by Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Chair Shook, and thank you, Chief Sherbaum and your entire team. You actually stated that it's not easy being a council member. Well, I submit it's not easy for sure, being the chief of police, chief of Atlanta Police Department, so. And it's not easy being an Atlanta police officer either. So I think you're going to win that battle because it's certainly not easy being on that side. And just as President Shipman stated, you all have been a true security blanket for us, and I appreciate that. Plenty of weird things have happened over the last four to five years, and you guys have really been there for us, and I appreciate that for sure. Also, in that same vein, I want to talk a little bit about how you all blanket the community in just regular, day-to-day basis. I've asked for your help with community involvement, and you've come right away, right at William Walker Rec in, just in 2025. And, but over the years, you've really been there for the community, even when you knew you were coming into an area where people were just mad about things. Like, we were upset about the shootings at the rec, and we're upset about the car break-ins, and we're only having the meetings to fuss at you. And they always leave understanding that these aren't things that you guys would want to see happen in the community, and you're going to do all you can to protect us, all of us. And they want to work with you by the time it's over. And that's the important part because we don't have control over what's happening in our communities in those aspects on a day-to-day. But it is important that they feel supported day-to-day. And I do believe that once you come in and really have conversations with the communities, which you do often, that they do leave feeling like they're in a partnership, and that's the most important part. So we don't expect you all to get it completely right, regardless of the size of the budget. But we do know that every time, you always show up in a posture to partner, and that's the important part for me. Also, want to thank you for pointing out the overtime numbers and what is baked into them, like some of the important, huge, major events that we host, including like the Peachtree Road Race, Holidays, the Fourth of July is coming up, Cinco de Mayo was Monday, and we have four sold-out Beyonce concerts coming up this summer. You know, seriously, those are the days that overtime should be expected. We can't, as a city, ask for these types of events and not expect for it to be taxing on our police department. So I understand those baked-in numbers where overtime is concerned. Yeah, we, we need it. So I just want you to know that, that I wouldn't dare punish your budget because the city is putting on these huge events and really enjoying all of the, the economic development that we have, all of these great restaurants, and everybody wants to be a part of all of the great events that we're having. So we have to patrol, and that's just part of doing business, and I'm here for that. Want to jump now to the Zone 4 precinct. I know for a while, we were a little stalled because of the trees, but the council was able to pass legislation so that we could get started on Zone 4, and I'm excited about that. Can you tell me a little bit about the budgeting, where those funds are going to be coming from, and the timeline as far as, as you know, just-
So Dean would probably be the best to answer that.
Okay.
Back to information, council member, on the, on the complete funding. The timeline, we might be able to give you a rough timeline, which Dean may correct us, so I just, I don't want to get in-
Okay.
-the messers way.
I'll, I'll be sure.
We can have a rough timeline that we understand it to be.
Yeah, Dean is the one that came to me and said, "We've got a problem because of the trees." So I will definitely check with them.
But we'll give you a rough timeline right now. Mr. Orr is going to give you a rough timeline.
Yes, it's supposed to start, it's supposed to relocate in June. And this was a start demolition in June, July, and the total project is being 12 to 16 months.
Okay, that's really quick. Okay.
According to what Dean has been saying in our preliminary meetings.
All right, well, just wanted to check on that. So thank you. One last thing. I want to tell you what I've been telling every single, probably eight years straight. This is probably year eight that I've said this. I want us to partner with APS to do an outreach to our children. When I was growing up in Atlanta, we had Officer Friendly. And I know I say this every year, but I really and truly want us to have a full-on campaign in our school system. I know APS has their own school, police there as well, but I think we need to partner with them in school because I think Officer Friendly is important. We are doing a really good job as a city with community policing, and now we have the Public Safety Training Center where we're making sure that we're getting even more training done surrounding community policing. And I think that the narrative needs to change, and it starts with children. I think that it always starts with children. And I would love for us to finally partner with APS to go into our schools and have our officers have a full-on campaign with them.
Yes, ma'am. I'll get with Chief Appleton. Now, where we are partnering now, we're doing the reading program. So most people at this table, many of our officers, myself included, we go read regularly at APS schools, in elementary schools. And so we are doing that now, and I will certainly have a conversation with Chief Appleton, how we can grow that, and what our presence in the classroom look like as we partner along with his department.
Okay.
But we're reading now in the schools, so we do that now at APS schools.
I commend you on that. I want everyone to know about it. I don't, I think that maybe it should be on the radio, on television, on social media, wherever everyone is getting their information. I want everyone to know about that because you all deserve to be applauded for the work that you're doing. And children should hear, and they can actually form their own ideas about how they feel about police at a very young age. And instead of hearing exactly what they're hearing, no matter what that is, inside the home, they can form their own opinion about how they feel about police officers at school, for sure. And I want them to understand the good that you all are doing in the communities. So that's still on my wish list. Okay, and I'll end with that, but thank you all so much for your presentation and everything that you do all the time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Ms. Collins, followed by Ms. Boone, followed by Mr. Wong.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and thank you for that, Councilwoman Overstreet. I know it's something that the school system is really looking into, just kind of thinking about how to, how to better partner, but also, you know, change the conversation and the perception of what, of what police and public safety is. And so I just wanted to, you know, give my hats off to Chief Sherbaum and the team for really being solid partners in this work and letting us know how we can continue to support. I do have a couple, I do have a couple of questions for clarity because I know I came in a little late, so my apologies, but I do want to first acknowledge, you know, being that this is my first deep, deep budget cycle on city council and really looking at the numbers, I'm wanting to echo President Shipman's sentiment and others across the board. I do think there, there is an important point that, and I've shared this yesterday, there is an important point of this process of transparency and for the citizens to understand the magnitude of this budget. Because what I do see is, over the years where it may, may appear this $50 million increase, technically, we're seeing, to President Shipman's point, this progressive tracking of spending that seems to be reasonable. But also, I do want to acknowledge that you all are proposing a budget that is an $8.32 million cut for this upcoming fiscal year, if I'm looking, if I'm looking at the numbers, correct? For clarity, so, so based on the general fund budget comparison that we have, for FY 2025, the year-end projection is 316.19 million. Your proposed budget for FY '26 is 307.87 million. So that's why I got this differential of an $8.32 million cut. So, that's why I got this differential of an $8.32 million cut, which I just want to confirm, but also want to at least applaud in those, in that aspect. So, that's the first, just kind of first confirmation. The second piece, in terms of the difference in the projections, just making it clear, the increased cost that we're seeing, is it predominantly overtime? And that's, and that is where I came in late, so just wanted to have some clarity on that.
Yes, I can take that one. So, yes, you are correct on the, on the difference in the budget. Again, the way in which we plan to get there is through the proper management of overtime, as we discussed, that is something that has been trending down since November. We've been very aggressive in that space. And then additionally, there was a large Axon contract in which we did for a lot of our technology projects, and so we.
Thank you for that, because that was, that's a great follow-up to my last question. This is the, I did see where you said some of the budget impacts was this movement of the Axon contract. This is the second time we're seeing this. We did, we also saw it yesterday with the, if I'm correct, the Citizen Review Board presentation. Can you just, for knowledge, can you give a little bit more detail on what those technology pieces are, just, you know, just for edification, just so I know what that is?
Sure, so it's the bundling of all of our technology. We upgraded the body worn cameras from Body Worn Camera 3 to Body Worn Camera 4, which gives a larger field of view, which is very important to us for transparency. It also has different communication technologies, and which are important to the officers to be able to communicate to the E911 Center. Additionally, it's a brand-new records management system. It is also a brand-new standard system is how we have our internal affairs process and how we move those files. Historically, that has been on paper. Now, this has transitioned all of that to digital. Additionally, it's the e-citation platform that we mentioned earlier. It also has our Arcatis software, and so that is the system in which sort of operates everything in which the department has. And then the last portion of that would be the fleet cameras that are inside of every one of our vehicles. All of that is also through that Axon contract.
Okay, great. I think, yeah, but thank you. I think that's all my questions, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Boone, followed by Mr. Wong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief and team, thank you all so much for being visible along the ML King Junior Drive corridor, and in particular, along Fairburn Road, and assisting us with closing down right now the Bull Bull that's at Lynnhurst. We appreciate that. That was a sore spot for our community, and it has been closed down because of the gambling machines and the hard work that your officers did. We just appreciate that. We appreciate the town hall meetings, the responsiveness, calling not just us back, but calling the MPU chairs, calling the citizens back. Chief, we just appreciate you and Assistant Chief Tyus for making those folks feel like they have a true ear. We really do. Are we comfortable with the cameras that are in the community at this point? Do we have a budget for more cameras? Are we comfortable with the cameras? Where are we on cameras?
Yes, ma'am, we're in constant dialogue with the Police Foundation. As you know, that is the entity, and oftentimes, working with you all for the initial installation. So, we do look for areas that we believe, in addition, would be helpful. We do provide that to the Police Foundation. We work with your offices on that. Our budget is to maintain the current infrastructure that we have. We also do move trailers as needed to areas. So, if we see an area we believe a camera, in fact, Bull Bull is one of those, ma'am, right across the street. So, we do have a set fleet of trailers that we maintain that is needed. The Atlanta Fair was one location as we.
Peyton Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Somewhere at Peyton, at the Gorham Plaza.
Right. As far as the affixing of a permanent camera, we will continue to work with the Police Foundation. If there is an area that you would like us to assess, does it need to be added to their list, we'd be certainly willing to do that.
Okay. Okay, Chief, we want to make sure we're not cutting the overtime that's needed.
Of course.
We don't want to get to a point where we don't have what we need, so let's make sure that we're just thinking things through as far as cutting that. Also, the officers that are the community guys, they are entrenched in these communities. I talked with Assistant Chief Tyus about that.
Character officers.
Character officers.
Okay.
They are, they relieve the major of a lot.
Okay.
They relieve, they do things that you all would not believe. When we can't get assistance from Fulton County or the state of Georgia, they are the first ones on the scene, and, and they are just entrenched in the community. So, please look at those cuts as well, rolling some of those back. We need those officers that we can call for things that aren't in criminal nature. Thank you for sending folks to Harper Archer Elementary School. That was a great day in our community. And I want to talk a little bit about the human aspect of our officers. We heard from the union. And we want to make sure that we have some counselors to help those officers that are suffering with alcoholism. We don't want them just thrown away. People go through divorce, and kids, and aging parents. So, we want to make sure that those that have an issue are not just thrown away, and that we are being compassionate about it, because it's a real issue here. It's a real issue. And sometimes, that's the only way you can cope, and you're just a functional alcoholic. And we want to make sure that we're giving them the support that they need. Also, to the team, I have to thank Major Sturdivant for what she does. The first one, when a tragedy, I, I mean, it's a lot. It's a lot. The first one, when there's a tragedy or a police officer is injured, she's at Grady Memorial Hospital, Emory Hospital, in all of these funeral homes. Just, it looks good when we have someone there that can talk to those families. We are here to support you all, and just let us know. But again, thank you all so much, but it is really on my heart about those folks that are drinking. And, and sometimes, people look down on that, and it's a real issue. We just don't want people thrown away like that. So, let's get some counselors in there and, and, and make them feel loved and cared about as well. Again, thank you all so much.
And Councilmember Roy, I do want to say, I appreciate you saying that, because we, we have officers that carry the burdens of a city, but they go home too, to families and issues that you just laid out. Our commitment matches yours, ma'am. The Wellness Center, there's now two Wellness Centers, and her Dr. Moore and her team. We want to be ahead of the crisis. We want to meet you where you're at and get you all the coping skills and the resources you need. We still maintain the wonderful teams at EAP after the crisis, but we do want to prevent the crisis.
We do.
We just completed Alcohol Awareness Month in April with a number of educational initiatives and resource enhancements. We have a mental health fair getting ready to kick off here very shortly. And so, if you see another way that we can reinforce our commitment to support the humanity of our officers or our civilian team members, we do not want to be found wanting in that area, ma'am. Okay? And thank you for saying that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wong.
Mr. Chair, and thank you, Chief. I'm going to jump off of two points that Councilmember Boone raised. The first one is around the video cameras. I know that a couple of years ago, we were at the point where a lot of the initial investments, the three-year maintenance and connectivity and all that was now flipping over to the city's responsibility. We are still, are we still in that phase, or is everything over to us now, and you're adequately funded for those?
So, it comes to us about each year. There's every year four. It's a constant role.
Okay.
So, and of the 2,000-plus that we have, we can get you a breakdown of what's currently under our care and currently under the Police Foundation's care. I don't have that in front of me, but we keep the system up and running. I think our average offline rate is 98, online rate is 98%.
Okay.
So, every, right now, I can look and see what cameras are down. We'll get a team out there as quick as we can.
Yeah, I guess I'm more concerned just making sure that we're adequately resourced that as that responsibility comes back to the city, that we are, are prepared to absorb and fund those maintenance and ongoing things. Because I do know that in our interactions with the foundation, it is about installing new, but again, it's that three-year first window where it's all covered, and then in year four, it comes over to us. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that, that we are acknowledging and properly investing in that transition.
It is, sir. The company that supports this net planner has full-time assets at our Vic.
Perfect.
To respond quickly, so we do have the resource we need to keep that infrastructure up.
The second thing that I want is around the overtime. I appreciate the numbers that you threw out earlier. The trend is moving in the right direction. I will say, something that I've been harping on since the very first budget hearing is that I feel like your department is demonstrating, finally, that our investments and our strategies are working for retention and recruitment. Your, your staffing numbers are going up, and your overtime numbers are trending down. And so, I would ask if you can, for this year, as you said those numbers, if you could do year-on-year, just so that we can see. I know that February, March, April are somewhat low months, because we don't have as many of the, aside from weather, we don't have as much, but I know we're about to hit the season where we are going to have more. So, it would be nice to also see 2024, what the remaining monthly run rates were, and then let's track what '25 looks like. But I would imagine, based on what you've seen in your staffing levels, that, that again, that strategy should be working where we can start lowering overtime, because we have the boots on the ground for those roles. So, I want to thank you for that. FIFA, and so, I, I don't know if y'all can tease out the incremental costs that we are projecting for those particular months. It may be in overtime, it may be in, I don't know where it would land. It may also just be a function of what our staffing levels are at that point, but I would imagine that we're going to probably have a kind of a bump for those months. Have y'all, do y'all, is that quantifiable, or is y'all just going to kind of, well, I, I'll stop at that question.
Actually, this month that we're in, we're going to have our first projection of staffing, because we have to do two things at the same time. Protect the event and continue to deliver police services. And so, we're doing our projection now of what percentage of the department we believe will deploy to that. We will be making requests to our partners.
Okay.
That we will be asking for officers to be assigned to the event from our partner agencies. And we believe we will have, by the time we, midsummer, a good fill of what we think it's going to be.
Okay.
Keep in mind, one terror attack somewhere in the globe could cause the entire plan to be rewritten.
Yeah.
And so, give us some grace on that space. But we do believe things that's currently known, we'll have a pretty good projection of what that overtime burn will be.
Great. Yeah, I just.
And we will have to spend overtime during.
Yeah, and, and I just want us to be aware of, you know, one, have confidence in, which I do, that you're planning for it, but then also, as we see monthly and quarterly numbers in the fiscal year '26, to understand that, that those last two quarters are going to be inflated because of increased activity, and that we plan for that. I'm going to put in a plug, as you know, for license and permits, just making sure that we are adequately resourced there. I appreciate all the, the numbers that you stated in terms of increased compliance checks and citations. I think that's a trend that we should, in our partnership with communities and neighborhoods and businesses who are complying, that, that we continue that, that level of effort, because I think it pays off ultimately, especially in advance of the world being in our home next year. Last thing I will say is, you've gotten accolades from all of us, but I, the one thing I want to really thank you for is, I have another vantage point into how APD fits into the broader public safety ecosystem in the state, both the state level as well as at Emory. And I, I want to thank you for the collaborative and coordination, and those are, I'm not using good grammar here, but it's noticed. I think our partners view us now as a really solid partner, and we'll be there when we need them for special incidents and events. But I think that comes from the top, that comes from the posture and stance that you take, and your, your team embodies that as well. And I think in this day and age, kind of took what Councilmember Colly Overstreet was saying about, it's, it is challenging to be in the public safety space. Our being able to lock arms with our sister organizations is, it's in a role, and I thank you for that. So, with that, I yield, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. We have three members with a follow-up question, beginning with Ms. Bactiari.
Thank you, Chair Shook. Yes, first, I wanted to, I forgot about two commendate, like two kind things I wanted to say. So, Ms. Solis back there, you have the brain of a supercomputer, but I just really want to commend you, because as you know, the cab Atlanta, the cabin Fulton, as we know, the issues there with call time have been pretty severe. Ms. Solis came out and talked to my neighborhoods, and we were able to bridge a lot of that. So, I wanted to also ask, have we seen that issue have a downtick? I believe we have, so I was hoping maybe you could inform us a little bit.
She's saying we're not receiving any complaints at this time.
Great, okay.
Either directly to us or via your office, and so do keep your ears alert. A lot of work, that was, I thought, a productive meeting at the church that was facilitated.
Two under detentions.
Yes, and so.
Virtually, and in person, well, virtually more so than in person. But it was, we, I would like to keep those regularly going. We've had, I think my severest issues have been in Eastland and Kirkwood, and those, those complaints have gone down. I just want to make sure that I'm following up with Ms. Solis to make sure that there's continued improvements, and that I'm echoing the message to my constituency. I did want to speak, I did want to ask if we have any plans. I don't, I don't know if my colleagues asked, I apologize, about the E911s about doing a new center. Have we located, I know we have money in our budget for that, that's already been allocated. Do we know yet where, when, and where that will be built?
I know Dean was exploring various, and I don't want to get ahead of Dean's presentation, so I don't want to create any confusion on the council.
He presented yesterday, and I.
Okay. Yeah, but the Dean had selected a location, and I would let them refer this as their final determination on it.
Thank you. The other piece I wanted to talk about, the diversion center and its utilization, have, has APD found that helpful? I've been, I've been hearing mixed reviews of actually taking people to the diversion center versus not. And COO, I did want to speak to you about perhaps longer hold times for people experiencing mental health issues. I know that we compete with Grady for those beds, and it's nearly impossible to get them. So, that addition, I know, has been really helpful, instead of having someone locked up for a mental health issue, which is not on you, while we don't have options. But I wanted to speak to, I was hoping you could speak to the utilization of that.
Certainly. And as you know, we're in the initial phase of that, and we're watching it closely. The officers so far this year have done 306 diversions. And so, that's three unique individuals that they have transported to the diversion center. That is very high, as, as I look for adoption and use. I was expecting a lower number of that, so I do want to thank everyone that educated around and went out to all the roll calls to inform the center. And what I'm getting back from the officers is how quick it is. So, the officers are able to transporting it back in service much more quickly than we have been before, when we're engaging anyone to provide non-incarceration services, if you will. And so, we are pleased with that. Over the next months, we'll know what areas it's being most effective in, what recidivism, if you will, because the only term I have for that, we see going back to help inform what staffing needs to be on-site, what resources need to be there. But for the officers adopting its use, we've seen them embrace it. And when I, the other day, I was coming by, the diversion center just stopped, talked to the officer, asked him how it went, praised how quickly the intake went, and how quick, how professional the staff was at the diversion center.
That's great to hear.
So, that is a good number to be this early in, and we'll start to make sure we see that all across the department.
Thank you, Chief. Would y'all be able to give, send a breakdown of monthly numbers of this year, as well as which zones have been utilizing this the most?
We can get that.
Thank you. And I also want to say that Major Webster and Captain Harris in Zone 6 have been doing a great job with us.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, and great to work with. And in fact, I think Captain, I mean, Captain Harris has been great at sharing responsibility with Major Webster. I did also want to ask about PAD. I know that there is room for improvement there, and that the numbers are not where we would hope they would be, and that is a, I think, a shared issue across the board. And so, I was also, some of the feedback I have gotten, and don't get me wrong, PAD, PAD needs to improve, but I have also gotten feedback that there seems to be an issue with officers utilizing PAD, and I was hoping you could speak a bit to that strategy.
Yes, ma'am, we know during the same time that we did 306 diversions to the diversion center, or 14 diversions to PAD. There's a variety of reasons for that. PAD were required, as you know, to have a consent by the individual that cannot be impaired by alcohol or any, any other impairment that is there. The ability for the officer to not have to wait is key. These officers know there's calls waiting for them. They know that the ability to get back in service is, is needed, and so to not have to be dependent on another entity to, A, be available. Keep in mind, the diversion center is 24 hours a day, Councilmember.
Correct, yes.
And so, PAD has a set number of days and a set number of hours that they're in service. So, when you look at 306 versus 14, those are two completely different business models.
Yes.
That are being used to connect individuals to services.
Understood, thank you. And Chief, I was hoping, I know, and I know that you were a very early supporter of PAD from within APD, so I was hoping to learn more about that strategy, and perhaps how I can do better in my district with APD to push higher numbers and better understand strategy, so I can be an asset to you all. And I was also going to ask, speaking about special events and everything else, is there, and perhaps this is a question for admin, is there a way, looking at special events, some of these fees, is there a way to better monetize them for our city? Because some of these fees have not gone up in a while under, and I'm not sure if they sit under APD, but a way to, no, it doesn't, so I will have to. under APD, but a way to, no, it doesn't, so I will have to speak about how we better utilize those funds to better supplement the work that you all do. I just think there's some things that we can uptick to better help APD with some of the things. And I think finally, is, I have been having issues getting, oftentimes when there are shootings or homicides in my district, or other violent crimes, I don't get the update yet from APD, and I know it's because you're in the middle of handling it, but is there a way to get updates on violent crimes? Because I typically find out from the constituents or the news before I know. And so is there a way to have that information more readily or better checked in, so that we can, I can better inform constituency of what is happening?
And that should be from your zone, Commander Man, so I will get with your zone commander to ensure that we're keeping updated and briefed on what's occurring in the district.
I appreciate that, and I also want to commend Major Webster, because the case manager program we have in East Atlanta, we were able to utilize the data that the case manager gave us of hotspots that we were unaware of, evidence of drug dealers changing out license plates on cars. And so I'm hoping to see more of that partnership, where we have somebody on the streets full-time assisting APD with information, since you cannot always be there. So I will continue to push for that and talk to you about that offline, but appreciate your help.
All right, thank you. We're now in watershed's time officially. President Shipman and then Ms. Silverstreet's going to close it out and let these fine people get back to work.
Thank you. Just two quick questions. One, Chief, have we seen any specific federal funding programs frozen or canceled, or do we know of any such programs that APD has benefited from that are on the block to be frozen or canceled?
We are directly receiving to the Police Department. Where we've seen a freezing of funds is our UASI funds, which is the regional emergency preparedness and counterterrorism. Those were frozen for a period of assessment. This week, they started becoming unfrozen, and the first one reopened. And so our meeting yesterday, it's hopeful those will be fully restored. So our primary freezing has been around counterterrorism, and we're hopeful this week and next, we'll see those fully restored.
Thank you. And then finally, we know that is an issue that happens around large events. I would assume the human trafficking threat increases with the World Cup, I mean, next year. Could you just briefly touch on anti-human trafficking efforts that you and other regional partners are undertaking?
Yes, sir. We work closely with the Attorney General's Office and the FBI and the GBI in this area. We have a standing partnership. When we know events will be coming here and the likelihood increases, that we'll be alert for that, making sure we have team members ready to deploy. We also, just this past week, started a pilot program with DFAX. DFAX actually touches a lot of the same areas we do around detecting human trafficking and being able to pull someone out of that, what is occurring. And so starting last week, we actually have a member of DFAX assigned to Public Safety Headquarters, working to assess all calls. Is there red flags around human trafficking? Has the proper mechanisms been acted to check on the child? So then we plan on continuing to roll that out. Right now, it's one, DFAX Investigator Headquarters, we want that to be on all three of our shifts. And by the time we get to the World Cup, if the pilot program works well, I believe we'll have that solidly in place to make sure we're optimally connected to our state partners.
Great. Thanks so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Silverstreet.
Thank you. As I close out, all of the talk around cameras and Atlanta Police Foundation, I just wanted to make sure that I let everyone know, and thank you again for actually coming with me, Dave Wilkinson, yourself, along with Invest Atlanta, to talk about the new grocery store that's coming at Campbellton Road at Delo. And we developed a plan around that, and the plan is about surveillance and patrolling, as well as community policing throughout, because it's the only grocery store that's going to be on Campbellton Road. And you understood that well, Atlanta Police Foundation understood that well, and we want to make sure that it's a total success. So I want everyone to know that our chief is happy to sit down and make sure that our surveillance is top-notch and that we're not missing anything. So thank you for that.
You're welcome, ma'am.
And thank you all again for coming.
Thank you.
All right. We all echo that. Thank y'all. We'll let y'all get back to work. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Watershed, you are up.
Hello, everyone. We go ahead and transition APD out and DWM in. We're running about eight minutes behind, so we'd like to go ahead and get started as soon as possible. All right, I've stepped in briefly while Chair Shook is out and Vice Chair Juan. So without further ado, Commissioner Ierle, I'll let you and your department leaders take it away. Thank you.
Order in the court, please. Commissioner, welcome to this, your first budget presentation. Introduce you and your team and take it away.
Good morning, Chairman Shook and Council. It is an honor today to be here. My name is Greg Ierle. I am Commissioner of Watershed Management. I have 32 years of utility management experience, and I have been with the City of Atlanta for five weeks. Our Watershed senior team is here with me to present to you the fiscal year 2026 budget, and I will have our team members introduce themselves, starting with the person to your far left.
Good morning. My name is Kim Frazier, Director of Human Resources. I have 25 years of HR experience and two and a half years with the city.
Good morning, Chairman Shook, members of the council. My name is Anu Sosovov, Chief of Staff. I have 23 years of experience in public works and utilities, been with the city now a little over three years, been serving the department here for eight months.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Williams. I'm Deputy Commissioner of Financial Administration for the Department of Watershed Management. I've been with the department for three years, with the city for 14 years, and beyond that, have 40 years of financial experience.
Good morning. Quentin Fletcher, Deputy Commissioner for the Office of Water Treatment and Reclamation. I have 25 years of utility experience within water and wastewater treatment and operations. I've been with the city for over 22 years.
All right. Pull up our presentation. Thank you for that. Next slide. The Department of Watershed Management's mission is protecting public health, safety, and the environment. We do that through three primary services. One is providing uninterrupted service of safe, clean drinking water. The second is treating and reclaiming our wastewater within compliance of all state and federal standards and discharging that water to our rivers. The third is to reduce the impacts of urban flooding while protecting our local streams, water quality, and health. We do all of these three core functions, keeping a conscious effort and outlook towards equity inclusion for all of these services. Next slide. Looking at Atlanta's Utility Department, Shad of Watershed Management, I've only been here five weeks, and I've talked to a lot of folks, both within the department, within the community, and our staff. And one thing I want to point out, as just a point of reference to frame where we are, is the Utility Department of Watershed Management is not inherently flawed organization. We inherited a flawed situation, like many large urban centers, that developed prior to the Clean Water Act of 1972. So a lot of our services and infrastructure were in place, and then the rules came out about how it is that we're going to meet compliance. That puts us in a harder situation than other areas that have developed mostly after 1972. And in addition, Atlanta has the added complexity of frequent urban flooding. Our organization, Watershed Management Services, are aligned in the manner shown before you. I have 12 different offices and direct reports, with dotted line support with our HR department. That provides added accountability, because they have independence from Watershed Management. Next slide. Departmental overview of our department, just some key stats to look at. We are among one of the 100 largest public utilities in the United States. Just as a note of reference, I recently came from the city of Houston as the Director of Houston Water, which was the largest water wastewater utility operated by the city in the United States. We have three core services I've mentioned before: clean, safe drinking water, we treat wastewater, and we manage our watersheds for protection from flooding and improve water quality. We have over 1,500 staff, 1,556 full-time equivalent positions. We serve 1.2 million customers through our 10 major service areas and offices, and we have 174,000 customer accounts. We have a five-year capital plan of $1.2 billion, and last year's adopted 2025 budget was $796 million. We currently manage $5 billion in assets, and we have among the highest bond ratings you can achieve. We treat and distribute almost 100 million gallons of drinking water a day, so 98 million gallons on average, and we treat and receive 138 million gallons of wastewater on average per day. Next slide. Our key priorities across all of our offices at a high level are listed here. Number one is to meet compliance guidelines, and I mentioned that early on. And number two is to have a service delivery focus, which includes meeting service-level agreements, or SLAs. An example of our service-level agreements is, for example, with water leaks, is to have that water leak investigated and completely repaired within a 30-day cycle. And year-to-date, we have done that, and 92.6% of the time. Now, I just want to put this, again, frame this in reference to the most recent utility I directed in Texas. Year-to-date, we've had 466 water breaks here with, in Atlanta, and repairing those within 30 days, 92.6% of the time. If you compare that to Houston Water in Texas, we had over 1,800 breaks, and their average repair time was over 60 days. We also want to focus on full cost recovery for all of our services. That includes with our partnering agencies. Maximize the use of internal resources while strategically balancing the use of our contracted services. There are times to use contracted services. In many cases, they will have specialized skill sets that they use in a regional or on a national scale. And for example, last year during the water outage, they were helpful in helping us repair large diameter, deeper lines. And that is common in the industry, where city staff focus on more routine repairs, both within our plants and within our system. We also want to optimize our watershed debt portfolio, pursue debt funding as warranted, continue focus on our collections, and we'll talk a little bit about that more in the future, of how we might maximize that. Maximize online payment, improve our on-time payments. Workforce development, we want to fill our open positions. We want to optimize labor and overtime allocations. You know, overtime is needed, it is necessary to do our jobs. A lot of times, we are faced with situations where we have to work until it's fixed. We want to recruit and retain the next generation workforce. And I want to talk just a little bit more in-depth about that very topic. We have an office, the Chief Administrator Officer, Donald Williams, is behind me. He is responsible, and his office is responsible, for helping train and assisting HR with recruiting. Previously, in other roles, I have successfully recruited and deeper into our schools, our local high schools. We partnered with local schools to create a work release program for seniors in their last semester, and they were allowed, as part of their curriculum, to take part of the work, part of their school day, and come to work with us in the utility. And when they graduated from high school, they had a job waiting for them. When I graduated from high school, I went into the Armed Services for my job. This allows us to keep people local and have a place to go and work up through the organization. Also, develop a curriculum for our students. We introduce those curriculums in our sciences, biology, life sciences. Every science discipline is represented in our treatment plants: physics, biology, chemistry, it is all there, our life sciences. So they, as part of their coursework, study our treatment processes, even make trips to our plants, and partner with our staff, and perform tests. And when they do that in their ninth and 10th grade years, by the time they're seniors, they have ideas about where they want to go. Maybe they want to go to college, maybe they want to stay here and come workforce directly, or go to college and come back. The other is to open up our facilities and tour the public and our schools, both middle schools and high schools and other public organizations, to show them what it is we do at our treatment plants. Water and wastewater treatment plants are the most complex asset that a city will manage. They're very costly to build and operate, and the more we can share that with our public, they can better understand why rates are what they are. our public, they can better understand why rates are what they are. They're very costly. We want to deploy technology and retain the next generation workforce that is more accustomed to using technology. We want to employ AI and digital twin. That will not only help us make our processes more efficient, it will enable our staff to make more accurate decisions. Deploying AI will not replace jobs or take away jobs. It will help us do our jobs better. We want to strategically align our capital investments and future operations requirements. That includes developing a bio solids program with our regional partners. We want to use AI on our stormwater for predictive modeling and help us better forecast the impacts of coming storms, and help us also plan for our infrastructure with stormwater. We want to employ as much green infrastructure for our stormwater as possible. Green infrastructure, number one, helps us reduce the impacts of urban flooding, and number two, helps improve the water quality before it goes into our streams and into our rivers. We want to continue with our upgrades and repairs at our water reclamation facilities, our water treatment plants, as well as our collection systems. We want to maintain a strong focus on maximizing accounts receivables, collections with enhanced technology and additional resources. A good example of that is the implementation of using smart AMI, advanced metering infrastructure. Not only will that help us reduce water loss, it will help our customers and constituents make more informed choices. They'll have real-time data of how much water usage they've had and what their water bill may or may not be by the end of the month, and they can make choices about their water. Next slide. I will turn it over to our HR person.
Good morning. The Department of Watershed Management has been on a very transformative drive to improve the organizational body, improve departmental efficiencies, and repurpose positions for use where vacancies were desperately needed. The plan over the most recent two quarters involved the HRBP team partnering with all department leaders in an effort to repurpose those extra help vacancies and turn those into our FTE positions. Those repurposed positions totaled over 85. The slide that appears before you detail the internal departmental breakdown with the current headcount. This total, as of today, stands at 1,556 field and vacant positions. Fund 505-1 has a total of 1,304 FTE, and Fund 505-2 has a total of 252 FTE. Where are we going with our recruitment efforts? Since the beginning of FY '25, DWM has aggressively sourced 128 positions. Eleven of those have been rehirees. As watershed management enters into FY '26, the department will not be creating any positions, but the focus will be again on fulfilling those current vacant positions, many which require license and certifications, and focusing on internal growth of our employees. Watershed Management has continued their strategic partnership with local technical colleges in an effort to support employee development and skill levels. DWM University, who is led by Chief Administration Officer Donald Williams, will continue to aggressively source recent technical graduates in an effort to fill those vacant positions that require licenses and certifications. Those vacant positions that do require some form of specialized license or certification can be found towards the end of your presentation in the appendices. I will now yield back to Commissioner Ierly. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Fraser.
You're welcome.
Now, to cover some of our key financial metrics and where we're headed, I have Deputy Commissioner Williams.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Jonathan Williams. I'll be providing you with the details of our proposed budget for 2026. As an overview, watershed budget is spread between two accounts, as Director Fraser said, 505-1 and 505-2, and reflects a balanced budget, meaning that revenue is equal expense for us in all submissions. 505-1 Water and Wastewater Revenue Fund derives revenue from water and sewer services, plant operating charges, municipal option sales tax, which I will refer to as MOST going forward, and other operating revenues, and supports the ongoing delivery, O&amp;M General Fund Support Departments, as well as the department's ongoing financial debt obligations. 505-2 Water and Wastewater Renewal and Extension Fund derives revenue from interest earnings, tap and meter sales, a portion of the MOST, and the equity transfer. This fund provides support for the department's capital improvement program. 505-2 also includes the Office of Linear Infrastructure Operations, Office of Engineering Services, and a small piece of Finance Administration. For clarity purposes, my remarks reflect both accounts with significant detail included in the appendix, or my veil will, if you want to talk about distinctions between the two accounts. Definitively, the Department of Watershed carries forward any variance between revenues that include water and sewer billing, MOST, and interest earnings, et cetera, in a category called Equity Roll Forward. These funds are utilized along with the governmental resources to supplement our short and long-term project capital requirements. As it relates to our total operations and maintenance budget, direct personnel expenses represent 21% of the total, and bond issuance and debt service represent another 36%. So, just between those two items, it's more than 50% of our total incremental expenses. Slide nine, please. Our forecasts for fiscal year in 2025 and the plan for fiscal year 2026 reflect water and sewer revenues that are slightly higher due to continued anticipation of population growth, while other sources of revenue that are impacted by market volatility and changes to the federal monetary strategy will likely decline. Municipal option sales tax has grown, although somewhat inconsistently, from roughly $146 million in FY 2020 to a forecast of $219 million for this year, with the highest year-over-year increase being $36 million in FY '22 before COVID, and the lowest being $5.9 million between fiscal years '23 and '24. While we expect most revenues to meet our 2025 fiscal year budget, they could potentially decline based on current market pressures and the potential for a system-wide recession. From an interest income perspective, the department has been able to take advantage of favorable investment rate returns that exceeded budget by $10 million, a 32% increase in interest income over 2024, over planned expectations. Our current 2025 fiscal year forecast is roughly flat year-over-year. We're almost dead on what we thought the forecast was going to be. The city's Treasury Department was instrumental in identifying and executing opportunities for bond refunding and reserve management transactions to make available additional near-term capital resources. These kinds of transactions are entirely based on the status of the economy and don't just appear because time has passed. Slide 10, please. However, with the expected downward trend in revenue streams that are reflective of overall market uncertainty, most particularly in interest income, coupled with the ongoing expense inflationary impacts to raw materials, labor, and borrowing rates, DWM expects the impact on funding on our ongoing projects to be adverse and significant. Watershed and the administration are currently evaluating the specific impact to timing and funding requirements, as well as their effect on near and long-term priorities and execution. One of the other additional areas of focus continues to be in the area of collection. In 2010, the city made the decision to suspend shut-offs for non-payment. As of March 2023, these shut-offs resumed, and since that date, we shut off nearly 4,000 accounts, established 1,630 payment plans, and collected an additional $3.8 million. Not anywhere enough. We don't have enough resources. So, part of our plan is to, in a very considered way, add both technical and personal resources. Even with this incremental improvement, Watershed is expanding its resources and technologies that will allow us to engage more completely in the number of customers, either directly or through electronic media, to improve collections and provide the capacity to set up payment plans remotely. Additionally, we are defining specific resources to focus on the collection of intergovernmental neighboring localities and other organizations that continue to use EWM resources without always paying in a timely fashion. Because of these market inflation and potential recessionary impacts, Department of Watershed is forecasting an equity roll forward that is trending downward beginning in fiscal year 2026. We are continuing our work in coordination with the administration, CFO Bala and his team and others, to develop alternative financing options, innovative project execution strategies, and reassessment of all rates and fees in concert with prudent expense management to address these funding gaps. With that, I yield back to Commissioner Ierly for any questions you may have.
Thank you. This past calendar year, if you think the last 365 days, has been very challenging for the city with respect to watershed management. You know, we had the water outage last year, and we also had challenges at our RM Clayton wastewater reclamation facility with issues related to our treatment. Despite those challenges, I do think it's important to recognize our staff and awards and achievements that we have been recognized for in the last year and things that we have accomplished. And for that, I'm going to turn to Deputy Commissioner Fletcher to talk about those.
Thank you, Commissioner Ierly. As Commissioner stated, DWM, we acknowledge our challenges, and we realize that there is more work to be done. This year, our department was recognized with the following awards and achievements: Association of Metropolitan Water Agency, Sustainable Water Utility Management Award, and we are also founding members. The Georgia Association of Water Professionals recognized the distribution system, where it looks not only at our mains, but look at how we operate our distribution storage tanks and our 11 pumping stations. The Georgia Association of Water Professionals also recognized the Hemp Hill Water Treatment Plant for a platinum award for maintaining compliance and not having any violations within the last five years. The Chattahoochee Water Treatment Plant was recognized with a gold award for maintaining compliance and no violations within the last four years. So, hopefully Chattahoochee will move to the platinum status next year. We also received the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services Water Fluoridation Quality Award. On a national level, the American Waterworks Association, AWWWA, has recognized the City of Atlanta for our partnership for safe water. Also, in 2025, we received the Georgia Engineering Award for Green Infrastructure Design Challenge, a merit award in the Small Project category for West Manor Park. We also received Up Under DC Williams for Finance, the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting in 2024. Next slide, please. Achievements: Improving our service delivery as regional water utilities. We have completed the distribution booster pump station, which is located on Highway 92. By installing this booster station, we were able to increase pressures within the areas of the cities of South Fulton, that is Palmetto, Faribault, and Union City. We've seen increase in pressures anywhere from 15 to 25 PSI. As Commissioner Ierly stated, we acknowledge our challenges at the RM Clayton Water Reclamation Center. Several of the compliance improvement projects we completed this year consist of upgrading our UV systems, our primary and secondary clarifiers, and we continue to ensure that RM Clayton is in compliance with the Environmental Protection Division. Our final achievement is the Chattahoochee Water Treatment Plant finished water pumps. We had four pumps, which was original to the treatment plant, which was installed in 1960. We have replaced four of those pumps, which would deliver 30 million gallons each into our distribution system. I yield back to you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Next slide. Well, I want to recognize our staff, our hard-working staff that work every day, both in the public right-of-way, in all weather conditions, work continuously through the night, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. They are non-sleepy working while we sleep to make our lives better. Without water, we cannot exist but a couple days. Water supports everything we are trying to achieve in this city and the cities around us, and I want to thank them for their hard work. And with that, I just want to thank you for that opportunity, and we'll take questions.
All right. Thank you. Well, first of all, you're eminently qualified to be here, and I'm looking forward to the legislative paperwork one of these days actually coming to us so that we can make it official. When's that going to be, Madam CLO? Next week. All right. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, in terms of your... Oh, and by the way, the fact that you started at the bottom is not lost on anyone here. I mean, it's a great calling card to pass out. In terms of your presentation, I, for one, will have to ask you to resubmit the data on pages 16 through 22 with an additional column showing 25 projections, because without that, it's real hard to draw a bead on your ask for this year. That said, my questions then will have to be of a pretty high-level nature. And again, I'm not going to go over some of the things that we had discussed previously. Did Houston have a stormwater utility fee?
Yes.
Okay. Because that's been an on-again, off-again topic here. The tires have been kicked a couple times. There was never a consensus around what that formula should look like, how those costs should be. I've always thought that we needed one provided it was well-done and the burden fell appropriately where needed. So, I'll be long gone, but I would encourage you to take a fresh look at that.
I'll add to that, that every utility that I have been associated with in my career has had a stormwater utility fee.
Okay. All right. You've touched on your anticipations, and I don't know what kind of vacancy rate you carried in Houston. What's been carried here traditionally is, goes up a little, it goes down a little, but it's flat a lot of the time. And so, I would be curious, perhaps you haven't been here long enough to really take a deep dive into that and figure out why that number is pretty consistent, or figure out what could be done to, you know, skinny that number up. But do our vacancy numbers remotely resemble what you were used to in Houston? I mean, is this within an industry standard typically?
Yes. It is similar to not only Houston, but when I talk to other counterparts in the large urban metro areas, we have the dynamic that it's expensive to live in the cities that we work in, and it makes it more difficult. Also, as an industry, we've done a couple things that made it more difficult to recruit people. So, we almost expect people to be qualified and certified before we start them, and we're changing that. So, we're now creating a ramp into our organizations where we can train them and help them get certified, rather than showing up with all of those credentials. So, very similar vacancy rates in Houston. We presently have We presently have 302 open positions here. When I arrived as Houston Water Director, we were around 340 open positions. And before I left, we were about 280. So shortening the lifecycle of the recruitment process is critical as well. You know, when we make offers, we need to get them here as soon as we can into the organization before they take another job.
So it's a pay issue?
Well, in Atlanta, you've recently completed a compensation study, and that's good. And so it is not only just a pay issue with other agencies. We need to... When we do compensation studies, we just need to ensure that we broaden what we're comparing ourselves to. When we compare ourselves just to other utilities, well, other utilities are having the same issues. So we need to broaden that comparison to other jobs in the area. So if I can go... If I am a young person and I'm looking for a career or a second career, what's available with my set of skills within a 20, 30-mile radius of where I live?
All right. I believe I remember you saying that you helmed Houston through a consent decree without an external PMT.
Correct.
How did you do that in-house? And maybe the scopes are completely different. But we have spent hundreds of millions aggregate on our PMT. And I say that, I will quickly say it's quite possible that they paid for themselves or perhaps paid for themselves or a lot of it via value engineering that they've done.
Yeah. So Houston was a different situation. What enabled Houston to gear up to manage its own consent decree is they negotiated the consent decree for eight years. Atlanta's situation was much different. Atlanta was kind of pushed into a consent decree, for a lack of a better term, very quickly in those terms. So Houston had a long time to begin to prepare for getting ready for a consent decree. We still heavily, in Houston, heavily relied on the private sector. And if it is... If you get some personal victory here is... Just as I was leaving, we were getting ready to put an RFP out to get some program management help because we realized we were about a third of the way through our consent decree. We realized it was becoming so big that we were no longer going to be able to manage it without program management. So we were actually going to bring some in to help us. More as an augmentation, we were still going to manage many aspects of our consent decree, but we still needed help from the outside public sector, or excuse me, private sector to help us with program management.
I would encourage you in your spare time to go back and, you know, have a staff repol the most recent X number of years of audit reports that pertain to your empire that's going to make very good readings, some of which is going to make your hair stand out quite possibly. But I mean, that's a great blueprint in terms of information that's been shared with council that's helped set our expectations about, you know, work that needs to be done. What do you make of our accounts receivable history here compared to what yours was in Houston?
Well, before I comment on that, you know, water as a service as we provide, you know, we bill water equally. And what I mean by that is, you know, we bill based on your consumption. And that, it puts our residents in a tough situation. Because it is very possible, and I'm just speaking from my personal and professional point of view here, it is very possible that, you know, a person, you know, somebody living in a very expensive condo, several million dollars, with lots of income can have a substantially lower water bill than somebody living in a different set of circumstances. And so waters puts our residents in a tough situation just because of its build-on usage, 100%. Second is, in Atlanta specifically, you had the consent decree from the late '90s push Atlanta's rates very high. So you're already up to the ceiling. And there's very little room, you know, as the term was used by a council member here, very little elasticity, very little room left for Atlanta to address its needs through rates because you're already at the height. And I just want to compare that to my most recent utility and experience in Houston. Houston doubled its rates between 2021 and 2026. They will have doubled. Houston could double its rates again between 2026 and 2031. And they will still not have reached where Atlanta is presently. So they're in a completely different situation, and most cities and utilities around the country are in a different situation than Atlanta. So it puts our residents in a very difficult situation. And, you know, we have areas of disadvantaged populations in the city. And so it puts us in the situation that we may have to shut people's water off if they don't pay. And I'm not here to comment on that. Other services, power, they shut people's power off if they don't pay. Other utilities, they shut their water off. I was a utility worker early in my career, and I used to go out and hang those notices on houses and then come back if they didn't pay a couple days later and lock out their water. So trying to balance that with the needs here in Atlanta, you know, we have to improve our collections. I do believe advanced meter technology will help us with that. People will have a better understanding of where they are in their bill cycle, and you could decide if you really need to water your lawn one more time. So we are behind on some of our collections.
All right. That's all I have now pending receipt of the requested data. Others? Mr. Hillis and Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. On your org chart and, you know, just from knowledge, two of your DC positions are vacant. And of course, you know, coming in, this department may have some organization, reorganization plans, and just want to see what the plan is for those two very important positions. One of them is on your infrastructure. And then ensuring this budget has what you need as you kind of write up this department.
Those are great questions. The first priority is to hire our vacant positions. And for me personally, that is hiring the people that directly support me. I have learned throughout my career that when you lose those key positions, one of the first habits you run into is you're a lot busier because you don't have people around you. And you're so busy that you don't have time to fill those positions and recruit for them because you're too busy. I've learned the hard way throughout my career. The first thing I need to do is stop what I'm doing and recruit and fill those positions because it's the only way I'm going to get out of the vicious circle. So that is the priority. We are working on posting those jobs soon, and we will recruit and fill those positions. And related to this budget, we have... For the priorities that we've set in the coming years, or the coming year, we do have the money that we need. Atlanta is in a balancing act. I mean, we have those three primary needs: clean water, treat our wastewater, and treat our stormwater. Those are our three needs. And they can happen to reveal themselves as the number-one priority any day. Any day in Atlanta, one of those three things can become the number-one priority. So trying to balance that with the money that we have, it is an act that we have to perform. We'll be continuing not only next year, but some of the initiatives we're doing this year will enable us to start down the path of better utilizing the money that we have to improve our efficiency and leverage the resources we do have.
Thank you for that. Chairman Shook and you both touched a little bit on collections. And as you know, it's been a topic of discussion here, whether it's from our residential and commercial accounts or from other governments. So I don't want to delve too far into that. I know I'm awaiting some reports as to just how much those are. I would like an update as soon as possible about collections from those other governments, either from you and your finance team or from the CFO. Or I know if it takes too much longer, maybe the COO should go sit in some other government's leader's offices until they hand her a check. But one thing I will request in addition related to collections is I would like to see so far in fiscal year 25, what we have, what accounts and arrears that we have collected versus what we have written off. If I can get a document that reflects that. You touched some on meters and technology. We have heard this for a number of years. There's been, I believe, some pilot programs, maybe some pending pilot programs. What is the state of our meters in totality? And what is the plan to upgrade those meters to better technology that include, you know, real-time knowledge, leak detection, et cetera?
Yeah, we do have a pilot program coming. And I will say, and I've said it internally and, you know, as I meet with folks, council members, or I'll just say it right here, our water meters and water billing is a big priority. Everything flows through that. So to address our primary three needs of clean, safe drinking water, treating our wastewater, and mitigating our flooding and stormwater runoff, all of that comes through our water meters. And so having accurate, real-time billing is essential. And so that pilot will become a key initiative in the coming year to get completed. So as we prioritize our CIP projects, it will, I believe, punch out of its weight class as a need because everything else comes through it.
What is the... What is behind on page nine when we're looking at water and sewer service revenue? The FY '26 anticipation is dropping almost $20 million from the fiscal year 25 projected revenues. What is behind that?
For that, I am going to refer to DC Williams. Is that related to utility auction sales?
No. It's just reflective of trends that we've looked at. We try to look at this not only monthly, but quarterly. And there's a big seasonality shift in this, and we have seen some reductions here recently. So our anticipation is reflective of what we see on a seasonality basis. Although I will say, in aggregate, it's still higher year over year. It's just that one category.
Understood.
And go full bore. We don't know what the impact of some of the federal decisions are being made, are happening now.
Come back a little closer to your mic.
We can see that there are, of course, tariffs. So there's going to be issues with us acquiring goods and services and all those things. There's also potential for folks to change their personal behavior. So we want to acknowledge that that reality could be there and not just put an enormous number in there that's reflective of an economic climate that doesn't exist anymore. So every month, not only do we do a view, we do a forecast for end of year and by category. And so that's reflective of our most recent forecast.
All right. Couple of you touched on an issue very important to me and my district, and that is are the issues that are in Clayton? How does this budget, if it does, or if it's perhaps from other capital funds or bonds, how does this assist in the direly needed RM Clayton upgrades and enhancements as well as continuing to ensure compliance? And also, as myself and the commissioners spoke about, ensuring we have the resources to implement any recommendations that come from the older control study that was conducted there. And I know DC Fletcher spoke about the... I believe you used the term upgrades, but that was basically just to bring the current older equipment into kind of working order and compliance with the clarifiers and the UV, which my understanding did not work, not because they weren't necessarily functional, but because you use UV to treat, you know, opaque water. So where are we right now? A little more detail. And then where do we see RM Clayton and some actual upgrades to the equipment there and processes going in fiscal year '26?
Councilman Hillis, those are great questions. So some of the upgrades that I was referring to at RM Clayton is that we did actually go in and rebuild some of the secondary clarifiers utilizing, you know, new technology with those clarifiers. So they are up and operating. Our UV system required some automation to make sure that if there's any alarms or any issues, we would know in real time. But those four UV systems are up and running and operable. They were recently installed... Excuse me. They were recently installed and upgraded, I believe, back around 2017.
I just want to add on that. This budget will support what's needed to put RM Clayton in full compliance. We are on the pathway to full compliance. We're having occasional excursions. We're on that pathway to full recovery. We will spend the money needed to bring that plant back into full compliance reliably. Some of that will... The lion's share of that work will happen in the next fiscal year, but there'll be continuing projects in the whole CIP, five-year CIP cycle. Some of those projects, like, for example, digesters and rebuilding those digesters and getting them operating correctly, they're not necessarily directly related to regulatory compliance, but they are directly related to improving plant efficiency, lowering our operating costs as well as reducing odors. In addition, some of the upgrades that we're making related to our recent regulatory compliance issues in our headworks area, those will also reduce odor emissions. So some will be more immediate, but it'll be an ongoing transformation over the next five years and then continuous. After that, it'll be something else that'll be ready to be replaced. So we never... Treatment plants, you never stop replacing and rebuilding them. You're always in that process of upgrading, rebuilding, modernizing. You know, we truly are the aircraft that has to fix itself in midair.
And so I would just request, as far as the current updates and ones coming, if I can just get a... I could just get a, you know, may not be able to fit onto one page, but both the projects themselves and the total spend over this coming fiscal year that is projected to be spent at RM Clayton. And on that subject, and kind of looping into the discussions about vacancies, your last page, I believe it was, you provide the number of vacancies that you have that require the licenses and certifications that you also spoke to. And it isn't lost on me that many of those are at RM Clayton and Intrenchment Creek, as well as the process, the sewage goes through before it gets there and our sewage infrastructure. 18 versus 22 at the treatment plant. So, what is the plan to get those licensed and certified positions filled as soon as possible so those plants can ensure that we maintain compliance?
We will be hiring, basically, it's not an internship program, but more of a apprentice operator in training, where we're bringing in people that have interests and a skillset, and we will help train them to the point where they can go ahead and sit for the exams, get their licenses, and get their certifications. So, they're learning and training while they're in that process, not necessarily coming to us with that certification. If they, the state allows us to have people that are not licensed work under a licensed operator. You just can't build an entire staff that way because obviously, you know, people get sick and whatnot, and so you always have to have a certain level of certification at a treatment plant. So, that's what we're changing, is we're creating that ramp to certification.
And just to ensure, as I mentioned, of these vacancies, a number of them seem to be concentrated on the two treatment, sewage treatment plants and the sewer side. So, are those being prioritized out of those licensed and certified?
Yes. Yes.
One final question is, and maybe this ties into, you know, the need to upgrade our meters, but one of the marks not being hit, and it's over, it's triple what the target is, the target is 3% or less, but we're estimating approaching 9% of our bills. And we certainly hear and get emails about when those things happen, and there are some misestimations because, you know, people get these, now here's your $50 bill, your $50 bill, your $50 bill, and then they get hit with a $300 bill. It's like, and you have to explain to them, well, now here's what happened, you know, they were estimating your bill for four months or how many ever months, and then finally someone came and read the meter, and those estimations weren't great. So, other than, you know, that meter upgrade, which is going to take quite a while, what are we doing? Getting more staffing to actually read meters to get that number of estimated bills down below the goal?
I don't have the specific answer related to reader, meter estimates. Deputy Commissioner Smith, do you have anything to add on that?
Yes. Mr. Hillis.
Come up to a mic, please.
One of the things we're doing is making sure that those estimations don't go so low. In other words, bringing that, those number of estimations down to where it's more of a quarterly or a semi-annual situation. One of the reasons why they get hit with that high bill, going back to some of the things that were said earlier, when we weren't cutting water off, a lot of times we see customers who had leaks. So, it's not just the usage that drives that bill up high. It's when we go out and actually start taking readings, there's also a leak at that residence that they were not aware of because, you know, we were not, you know, forcing customers to pay their bills. So, it's a combination of both. In the short term, the solution is to get more readings that are true and real and not estimated. But ultimately, to address where we are, I have to completely agree with the Commissioner, we'll have to go AMI. Yeah. But hopefully, that addresses your question.
Yeah, yes, sir, Deputy Commissioner. Thank you, and thank you, Commissioner and your team for the feedback. Thank you. Chairman Shook.
Yep, thank you. We have Ms. Collins followed by Mr. Shipman. And just FYI, the time we are now into is our lunchtime, and we will reconvene promptly at 1:00. Ms. Collins?
Thank you for that. I'll just make it quick. I think we talked about the collect, the importance of the collections piece, and just for me, be able to see it, excuse me, see it in the budget, what do you anticipate in terms of cost, or what have you budgeted for next year in terms of meter, you know, meter fixer, fixing the meters, but also the collection piece? That's my, the first part of my question. The second part is in terms of, I guess, the status of the report and understanding that, what the collections are, you know, how much the collections, what is the process? The biggest piece, what are we seeing across the city in terms of, like, the, you know, which areas are where we're seeing most of the collections and deficiencies? And the reason why I ask that is, I know they, I know a couple of my colleagues may have, but since being in office, I've gotten a couple of calls with community members that have really, really high water bills, and, but they also state that they've been trying to work with watershed to have their meter fixed, or they know something that, you know, there's something that is happening. And the unfortunate thing is our elder, is our elderly. And so, you have, you know, an elder person that comes in and say their water bill is $12,000, and it is just them, and if they didn't come up with $2,000 that day, their water would be cut off. It is, and this is just recent, it is, it is a red flag that really do go up, go up. So, just wanted to understand how in this budget, allocation to support those efforts, what that looks like? And then, of course, there's a status on the report to just understand that so we're better supporting our citizens that are in those situations.
When you say the report, could you be more specific?
I think it was a report, Councilman Hillis, that you were referring to in terms of just understanding the collections and doing a deeper dive of what that amount, you know, of what that looks like.
Okay.
And I don't, you know, for me, I didn't, I just didn't want to duplicate efforts. So, I'm quite sure.
There is a process. There are in excess of 30,000 accounts that, for whatever reason, since 2010, have fallen into disrepair. The information may not be correct, the meter stuff may not be correct. So, we're, you asked me how much we were investing, we put a million and a half dollars in towards getting some short-term professionals in to help us engage with folks. Because honestly, with 39,000 people who may have a problem, most of the calls are coming in as opposed to us going out and connecting with people where they, where they live. And so, we're working it that way. We do have budget set aside for that. The meter technology is going to help really a lot because it will tell people on a daily basis if something's gone awry, and it will allow us to potentially do long-range corrections. We can turn people, we can make adjustments from a distance. So, it sounds like, and I said to Mr. Hillis, that we need to just have a session where I'll come over and take you through the, soup to nuts as it relates to what has happened since we started the cutoffs, the differentiation between single-family, multifamily, and commercial. There's confusion about the, what is actually an active account. You cannot cut off an active account. There are significant accounts that are inactive that need to be addressed, but for that reason, we need to connect with folks. So, it sounds like, in short order, I will put something together for any of you guys that are interested in walking through how the process works. And we, I think Mr. Hillis said he wants to know what the, we don't write off any active accounts. Any accounts that we bring in are dead, meaning there's nobody living there, there's a bunch of issues that have to, that would keep us from just writing off people or potentially providing preferential treatment to folks who don't have to pay anymore. We're trying to be consistent as well. So, we've got some short-term budgeting that's in place. We've got some technology that will also help. At this point, the number of people, since we started the shut-offs in March of '23, the number of people actually paying on time is actually pretty high. Our issue is those accounts that are old and unkept and may have a bunch of issues associated with them that have to be addressed. But the percentage of billed versus received on a given month is in excess of 90%. Our issue is trying to figure out what happened in 2011 to a person who may not be alive anymore. So, I'm happy to share all that information with you.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. We can, we can connect, coordinate that offline, and great presentation. Thank you all so much, and welcome, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sorry for the lengthy response.
No, no, that's great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you all. We look forward to receiving that outstanding information. And with that, that closes out the morning portion of today's budget hearing. We will stand in recess until 1:00, when we will reconvene and hear from AIM. Thank you.